Janice, member.
Harry Noto is alternate.
Wendy Rathgaber, alternate.
Okay, we got two open slots, so we'll seat Wendy and Harry. Is Bill, Bill gonna come?
Um, he didn't say otherwise yesterday.
Yesterday, okay.
No.
I must, it's streamed you guys yesterday.
Let's see, next is review and acceptance of the minutes from October ninth. See, I had, I had a comment on this paragraph four, the privilege of the floor.
Which line?
Um, thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
It says it was decided that they do count. And that, I think it should say, phase one was approved with them counting, but the consensus of the board was that it needed overflow parking. Because I remember saying that. Because phase one was approved in two stages. Once we approved it, and then they had to come back when they did the garages, so.
Yeah.
You know, that was not a clean approval.
That was a bad thing, no.
Anybody agree with that?
Mm-hmm.
Catching the flavor of that?
Yeah.
Any other comments? Who's there?
Carrie. No periods, no apostrophes.
He's not done yet. Oh, he wasn't here.
Okay, now, do I have a motion?
I take a motion to accept the minutes of October ninth.
A seconded as amended, you mean, or?
As amended.
As amended, sorry.
It's okay.
Any further discussion, all in favor? Thank you.
But you're not done, are you?
The privilege of the floor.
We have no floor.
We have no floor. New business, the Clearwater Lane lot merger and lot line adjustment. And with that, I'm gonna recuse myself because I'm a, I'm an abutter, so.
And I am also, so I'll recuse myself? I guess that means me.
That you.
Garage. Okay, there's nobody here apparently to represent the town or Waterville Company.
I thought you were here last time around, right?
Well, I wasn't here, is that right, did they present it last time?
Yeah, did Mark, Mark present it?
Mark is upstairs, I'm sure he's high on the phone.
All right, I have plans here, if anybody wants to see him, I got a couple plans. Do you go over to the point where you accepted it, or?
It's right here, do you wanna read it? Here.
Okay, I'm just gonna re- refresh our memory here. Lot line adjustment, the Waterville Company Incorporated at seven Clearwater Lane. Mark Dakota presents a map that states that the application is two requests. The first is to combine the two lots of the old gas station and the town hall as a lot merger. The second portion is to adjust the lot line between the town lot and the Waterville Company lot. The board reviews the maps as presented. The lot line adjustment benefits the town, uh, benefits to the town are that we would own the land and access the rear of the wastewater plant and Waterville Company Incorporated. The benefit will be that the lot lines are straightened to extend setback areas and maximize land usage for development. There are easements to the trails to the river and, and in this language, and this language will be available at the next meeting. Notice of the abutters, condo associations will be done and the item will be placed upon next month's agenda. Okay, so apparently the abutters have been notified, are there any abutters here?
They have.
Yes, there are two.
There are abutters.
Any comments? Okay, um, and what was the, it was supposed to be the language.
The language, the language is not ready. Bill has been trying to get the attorney to do that and it has not come back.
Okay.
So.
So, we will, well, the, the language will, will be the standard giving us an easement on the, um, trail. Um, I don't foresee any issues, we can, we can distribute it to you. If you wanna do a conditional approval until you've looked at it, that's fine. If you wanna wait, um, that's fine too, I guess. Um, we just can't, we haven't gotten it back.
Is there any urgency with regard to getting it done?
Um, I don't know if Bill has any urgency, there's no urgency on the part of the town. Um, but that's up to you.
My preference would be to table it, um, if we can avoid a conditional.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, if you, if you extend the meeting and we have it by next week, you know, if you have enough, you know, continue the meeting to talk about the zoning changes, you can always vote on it at the continuation.
It just makes it a little simpler.
Yeah, no, it's, it's fine with me, I'm sorry we don't have it for you yet, so. I pretty much, I expected that you would wanna do that.
Okay, then I guess we'll, uh.
Just table it, yeah, just table it, it's continuing, yeah, yeah.
They didn't include it, I was wondering, they didn't include the whole lot, this, this lot.
What is not included?
You had the total lot for, um, Waterville Company where the lot adjustment's going to be, but you don't have the total lot for the town of Waterville Valley where the lot adjustment's going to be.
Okay, I'll talk to Bill about that.
Technicality, I'm sure, but.
Okay.
It's the town, you don't have to do it yet.
We don't have to do it.
But that's gonna get recorded though, right?
Yeah.
Um, the lot combination, they don't, I don't know that they need to see everything. It's more for the, just taking off the line for the mappers. I don't know that that's gonna be an issue that needed to be recorded at the registry.
I think the clarification on legality of that would be.
Well, I would look, look for it more for the lot line adjustment, but, um.
Right, and that's why these are the two lines that are being adjusted with the lot line adjustment. The combination of lots, I don't, I'll, I'll have to ask town council, um, but I don't know if that has to be a plan recorded at the registry. Cause you're just taking off the line. But, I'll ask, if town council wants it done, we'll do it.
Okay.
Yeah. That's easy.
Thank you, Mary.
Is the board okay if town council says there's no need to have that as a recorded plan for a lot line or a lot combination?
Bill, do we have a choice?
Well, yeah, you do have a choice. If he wants to do it, we'll do it, but if town council says there's no issue with it.
Yeah, why wouldn't we do it? Yeah, my, my concern is, like, say Waterville Company sells the property and they do a top, you know, an abstract, title abstract. And that lot, line adjustment may be set in an easement, but it's not recorded on the plan. Usually you like to see the plan to offset it.
Well, this plan will be recorded.
Oh, I thought you said it would.
This, this plan will be recorded.
Oh, okay, okay.
This plan does not include the entirety of the lot that we're sitting on right now.
Oh, okay.
Okay, however, it does show the property point where the combination is occurring. It's showing this lot as one lot, not the old gas station lot and this lot.
Yeah.
So, that's what you're concerned about.
My own, no, my only concern is that the, the ordinance says that the site plan, if you're gonna be doing a lot line adjustment, should show the whole lot, those that are being affected. It's a technicality, I mean, you can see what's being done without the whole lot being shown, it's just that the, the ordinance says that.
But, but also, if he just records that and not the whole parcel is there, they can backtrack and see the original parcel for the town. It will show the original outcropping and the way it was done, so it's not like.
Well, yeah, but the, the regulations say that the whole lot should be there, so we'll, we'll talk to town council.
It would eliminate confusion possibly in the future anyway, if somebody just took the other one. Mark, do you want the rest of the package?
Yes. Right.
I'm just thinking, if, if we don't continue this till the twentieth, if this is tabled, does that automatically go to our next meeting?
Yes. I mean, it's, it's a, it'll just go on the agenda again.
Okay, and you won't have to renotice it?
We will not, I mean, we've tabled it, you haven't disapproved it and submitted another plan or anything, you've tabled it.
Is Bill coming?
Uh, I don't think he could fly in from Denver.
No, no, our bill.
Oh, our bill, I don't know, he knew that there was a meeting, so.
He didn't say anything this morning.
He didn't say anything to us. I understand that. I'll go try to call this.
Good for them.
Casey's.
Are they putting the house over there? And, oh, he was planning five months there and the rest up there.
That was the rumor though.
That was the rumor?
Yeah.
Did you talk, um?
Now, did, uh, did everyone get this? Did everyone get this, uh, from Mel and Mary?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I didn't print it out.
Eight, 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 I think, twenty-seven dollars.
I agree.
So who needs a copy?
We're just dealing with the language part, right, no?
No.
What, can you do it out for everyone so we're all together?
Oh, I have that on my computer, anyway.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, let's see.
Just these pages or the whole time?
The, the whole, uh, let's see, the whole thing.
Cause these are just, this just, this is you, I mean, it was.
No, 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 there's only really ten.
The rest of the pages were all.
No, the lighting stuff.
No, but the rest was all the lighting, uh, state regs or whatever.
Just the lighting handbook. Yeah, I know, it scared me, I said, I'm not turning this out.
It scared me too. I did though.
The whole thing?
Yeah, I did.
I tried, my printer said no more after page four, so.
Just two more, two more, it's only six. Anyway, well, let's go to, uh, the Whitland study integration to the master plan.
Okay, did everybody, uh, receive the updated language?
Yeah.
Any questions?
Nope.
I don't know, if everybody's good with it, then we should, I guess, accept it.
That was good.
Was there any comments on it?
What does it mean when it says that the Conservation Commission in brackets shall keep an index of all much?
I, um, put Conservation Commission in brackets cause that's not in the language, cause they're referring to the Conservation Commission, so I just wanted that to be clear, maybe. Cause they say it, they say it shall.
Okay.
And I didn't, you know, it didn't say who the it is, so, just wanted to clarify that.
All right. Terry, you have any comments?
No.
Okay, so I guess we, I'm gonna put it in. There's a separate chapter, it's the next chapter.
Right.
We wait for.
Yeah, as far as, as far as anything further from the Conservation Commission, um, this, uh, next Monday's meeting, I'm sorry, this, it would have been, next Monday's meeting is canceled for some reason, I have no idea why. Last meeting, there was not, we didn't have a quorum, so we had an interesting informal discussion. Um, so as far as getting any recommendations on proposed zoning changes, uh, right now, it looks like that might have to wait for the next round. It may not be this year.
Pretty tight this year.
It's pretty tight, although the chairman of the commission still wants to try to get something out to you, to the planning board, but whether that, I think the chances of that happening now are fairly slow.
Okay, that raised, raised copyright.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Three, and two, three.
Now, what this is, this is the initial, the initial, uh, draft of the report from the.
Well, it's, it's not the full initial draft, it's what they've pulled out for us to look at.
Right, actually, you're right.
Because the official draft should be here tomorrow, the release.
We asked them to, uh, give us any recommendations of, uh, zoning changes that they would think would be critical, and that's what they did. So they, they've given us, uh, three proposals, parking, outdoor lighting, and signage. I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you, those people who haven't read this, have any chance to read it, cause this is really the bulk of it. I hope Bill shows up.
Bill will be a while if he's on the way.
Okay, cause he's done a lot of work on that signage. And I think we're in, on his best shape on the signage.
Actually, I'll go up and run off the draft. Did everybody get a copy of that draft of Bill's, the matrix, that you need it?
No.
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 A recent one? Well, it's in his initial one.
Did he make a change to it? Okay.
He has a matrix, uh, so that you can talk through.
Okay, yeah, that would be great.
All right.
Cause Wendy and, we gave him some comments, and I don't know if he incorporated them or what.
He said that he was during election day, but then I never heard anything else.
Yeah, I saw him after that, and he said he didn't do it yet.
Oh, okay.
But that was a week or so ago.
Busier in the polls and that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was busy.
Yeah.
That's good.
It is good.
Yeah, I have to come to the district, I have to analyze, I have to read much. I'll be up and done, but if you start at E, I'll hold you for an hour.
Soon as Mark comes down.
And as a good physical process of waiting for the town board, I don't know what that process is. Everyone is like.
I just think it would be important to have somebody present on that resource association. I mean, you know? Cause we never get feedback.
I'm the vice president. I mean, I was, I don't know.
Yeah.
So I'm, uh.
Bring it up and just see what they have to say about it.
Well, I'm sure they'd be in favor, I don't know the processes, so establishing a board, they'll have to go through this, right, then, before they tell you.
Okay, gotcha.
But yeah, I mean, no doubt.
He's looking for comments. No, I, I think this is interesting. I mean, it's gonna take some study, but this is what I was, an example of what I was hoping, yeah, that study. I was a little concerned, we're gonna end up with some sort of.
Yeah.
But this is, I'm not saying I agree with it all, but just, this is what I was looking for. But it's, I don't think it's, it only covers three subjects, I'm assuming there's going to be more.
Yeah, these are just the things that, that were most important to push through for possible zoning discussion for this town meeting.
Because it didn't really get into bicycle or sidewalk or anything like that, right?
But I don't think we thought it was realistic to make those wides were being changed as of this town meeting.
At this point, but it will be, it will be.
It will be.
They will address, this is nicely addressed, I like the way they do this, this is what I was hoping they'd do.
Yeah.
I just don't think it's extensive enough, that's all.
No, this is what we can realistically do by December.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's a big chunk, these are.
It's just that we're working against the calendar right now.
Yeah.
I don't think it's probably get that, but, you know, there's an awful lot there.
No, I know.
I know.
Yeah.
They really have to, you have to mull it over, you have to think about it, you know, you can't just kinda.
But I like the way they, they give us the reference points from our town.
Potential next Thursday meeting?
Which I think is really.
Go through this and then carry it to next Thursday, no? What's that, right?
Everybody's in a rush.
Well, I think Sharon had gotten it to us under the weekend, so we'd be able to talk about it today, whatever extent.
Yeah.
No, it's good, it's good, lot, lot here.
There was a lot to read.
There is a lot to read.
And just for your information, that Wendy and I had a telephone conference with Mark Kane yesterday about the parking, and he, all of his recommendations of, of, are for C one. He thinks that C one is a, is a unique area, and his recommendations are only for that one zone. So that kind of, just, just to clarify that.
Which I thought was a, a good thing, hadn't really thought about before, was differentiating for the zoning for that area versus the rest, for lighting as well.
His recommendations are only for C one, but he does recommend that you have different.
Differentiation, yeah.
Yes.
For different, I think that's good.
I do too. I mean, the reference points that he gave us on the matrix, I thought was handy.
Yes.
So, you know, treating C one differently makes, makes a lot of sense because it's supposed to be commercial, it's supposed to be developed by density. The, the one thing that, that struck me is, when we talked about C one initially, we had discussions about, uh, multifamily homes, and it looks like that's what's gonna get built, which is not the intent of C one. So I'm thinking, I wonder if we can limit the amount of small multifamily homes in C one to, say, twenty percent or some such thing, to preserve room for larger complexes. Like, if they wanted to build another Black Bear, that'd be okay. But to build these, uh, triplexes, I mean, I could see the whole area being covered.
Yes, I thought C one was like commercial shops, businesses, and housing.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I thought I remembered, and I wasn't on the board, but when the presidential.
Speak up.
We need to have everyone speak up a little bit.
Speak up, okay.
Sorry. But when the, I had that same discussion at Comravina, was it the presidential townhouses, the ones by the Black Bear there? Is that sort of similar?
Yes, it, it is, yeah.
But I think the way the, the zoning is written, the, the higher up the zoning goes, the more it's allowed to be in it.
Right.
And it seems like multi-housing is almost in almost every zone other than low-density residential.
Uh-huh.
And also, there was one other one that we, um, I think we made it so you couldn't do multifamily houses in one of those zones, whether it was C one or C two, a lose track.
No, we never had a C two.
Village?
Village Communal, I guess it would be, I thought there was one that we had, pretty much made it so that you, you couldn't have a multifamily, I mean, I think it was possible to have a, a apartment above, but.
Yeah, no, we talked about it, but that never happened, yeah.
This is good, flag.
So I don't know, do we wanna start with parking, and, yeah, we might as well start with parking because, oh, Bill signs up to his signs, I'm sorry, mumbling here. So we'll start with parking, I'm kinda talking to myself here. Now, his recommendation is, is that, well, you've seen him, to, to reduce the requirements in C one, have garages counted, which is one thing I think we can easily agree with. My only comment on the garages was, is he recommends that indoor parking areas get reduced to, uh, nine, nine feet by eighteen feet. And I think that the history of garages, the early condos that had garages had very, very small garages, which meant that people were storing their, their, their things instead of parking their cars. I think the garages that we're seeing built now are big garages, enough, enough room to get your car in and store, uh, your toys.
But I, I think that recommendation tied in with parking complexes as well as resident, I don't, I think a lot of this is geared towards complexes, not residential, which is where that dimensionality was there, because like you said, right now, we couldn't build a parking complex.
Yeah.
Because it's not parking, according to our regulations.
Question, if, if it's determined in our zoning that a garage is counted as a parking space and it's defined as that, what they do with that space is not our business, it's their business, but they in fact lose a space.
Right, and we talked about also the possibility, some towns, um, have it set up so that if there's a change of use in a residential complex, it has to be approved by the town. It seemed a little bit overwhelming for us, but what we thought was perhaps we could require that the condo docs, their regulations, um, make it so that there cannot be a change of use, so that a garage is for parking and there cannot be a change of use of that particular area of the, of the complex.
Are we discussing the entire zoning in all districts, or, or are we just talking about the C one?
No.
We ordered C one before.
Parking, I think it's all, everything, everything.
Well, you can do it in C one first and then carry it over if you don't want it to apply to the whole, it is, I mean, we can put these recommendations in just the C one zone, or you can make them ordinance-wide, whatever you wanna do.
My concern is that, you know, Bill, Bill Wa, Bob Wiles rather, and Bill Cantland were here to do that next phase coming up, and that's such a narrow road going in there. And if they put these garages in and we don't count them as garages, as a parking space, we're gonna have to, I don't know how storage is gonna be for snow, I'm not sure how, uh, parking will be with the snow there, if we should have, you know, signs that say overflow parking within that vicinity are in their, you know, their, Black Bear parking garage. But I think we need to have it so that it's clear that a parking garage is counted as a parking spot.
It's funny that you mentioned the narrow, I mean, this kinda segues a bit, but the other issue that Mark had brought up was that we shouldn't have those narrow driveways and should not be able to be used at streets, they just shouldn't. And be mostly because if we require in C one, the, whatever you wanna call them, the roadways, to be wider, then there's a natural overflow parking if they park in front of the side of the street. But right now they can't park in the side of the street to narrow.
Right. Should we be addressing C one separately, only because.
Why don't we start with that?
It may have this.
We're more comfortable.
Potentially however you vision, vision the development of it. You'll, there, there may be some specific areas like that, that will pertain to C one and not necessarily to, uh, HDR or the other stuff.
But my concern is, is that if we are approached with a plan coming up and we don't have our zoning in place and we have nothing to fall back on, we're faced with that dilemma again. I mean, it's, it's as clear as it can be, we need, we need to start counting those garages.
Yeah.
And if people choose to do whatever they want, that's their business, but they don't get another parking spot.
But we could require then to say that the garages are be used for parking and within the condo docs, there cannot be a change of use of the.
I agree.
Section, whatever you wanna call it.
I'm just afraid we're gonna be caught and not be prepared to handle it because our zoning regs aren't dealing.
So, yeah, that's what we're trying to get this done.
Yep.
Well, my concern always is the, if we count the parking spaces, which, and, and the garage, which I agree with. But then the spaces in front of that garage, it has to be limited common area because you can't have other people parking in front of that garage.
He does kind of address that, because he's got guest space.
Yeah.
He said, he just thrown on a table, one additional guest space must be provided for every ten units of a multi-family use. So he is addressing that.
Yeah.
But if you have a two-bedroom or even a three-bedroom with a one-car garage and they only have that one, the garage space plus one space directly in front of them, is that, that gives them two spaces.
Gives them two spaces.
So is that sufficient that we have to do that?
I think, I, I, taking Green Peets as an example, because we don't know what's coming before us.
Right.
We can imagine, but we don't know. There's three sets of, there are three attached condos there, as we know, the two-in ones and two stall garage under with the two limited common areas in front, the third, the middle one seems to be the problem. It has a one-car garage and two squats. Same size unit, right? It's just missing one garage, or basically.
I'm not sure.
My, my, my thought is, why not make it that that, in the future, a middle unit like that would have to have four squats. Everybody else does, what's, what's gonna be different?
If you look at the matrix, look at Burnham, New Jersey, number four, it says Burnham Township requires one point five spaces per dwelling unit. One of those spaces must be a garage, and that's a multi-three-bedroom home.
Right. And the other thing that was really interesting, again focusing on the C one, is, and it touches on it in here, is the concept of shared parking, right? And if the developer shows that there is within, you know, a reasonable distance, a five-minute walking distance, say. If the developer shows that there is overflow parking, that they can in some way contribute to the upkeep, you know. We're, we're in this transition spot, so it's hard right now, but it's a great way, a great tool for the town to be able to say, okay, well, you wanna build this. We don't want a lot of paving, you don't wanna pay for a lot of paving, have the whatever, one point five, two hundred foot sign on parking spaces. And help us, you know, put X amount in for a clearer pathway to this general parking, shared parking. And upkeep of that shit.
Didn't we go through some of that with the timbers? Shared parking and then additional overflow parking, and then we talked about where do you put the snow?
Well, instead of shared within the unit though, shared within the community.
You know, the parking lot in towns where, you know, it's town, that whole central parking, Black Bear, Towns first, Snowy Owl, everyone uses it, right? And that's the sort of concept that they want, that they're suggesting that we keep going with, so we don't end up paving everywhere as people to park. And that's where having a wider streets and not these little driveways could come into play too. If we were to allow street parking in C one, then there's a natural overflow as well. So maybe we can be more strict, you know, keep the numbers lower for the parking. But require wider streets, not these driveways, so that there's natural flow there. And require that they show where an already paved area is that can be overflowed.
If we allow on-street parking in C one for an appropriate-sized street, we run into several of the problems, right?
Well, you know, like in, I don't know, thinking progress town in the summer, when they have the street sweep, you get your car off the street or it's still. Maybe it's the same type of thing, or if it's a private road, you know, it's sort of there.
It'd be like a, a regular town or city with a parking ban between, you know, like certain hours or something.
Well, if it's a private road, it's their problem, right?
Right, correct.
We, we don't plow.
True.
So it's there, they.
No, we're not gonna accept that anyway, right?
Sure, the town doesn't take care of private roads. But I think it's important to keep in mind the timbers and V C, you know, whatever changes we make. If, if we make C one so attractive to people to build condos on it, they won't develop the, what little V C land is left. And we'll really wind up with all condos on C one.
Do we look at limiting that, if you were suggesting earlier?
That's it.
Do we look at limiting that? Yeah.
That would be my recommendation, somehow get some control back on it.
Can we do that? Yes.
Sure.
We definitely think we need to get those ducks in a row, pull more space for them. So if we, yes, we have a power percentage? Does everyone like the idea of not those driveways, but a wider, establishing wider streets?
I think it depends how it would be developed, but, um, well, I think, I guess we can't do that. I, I, I keep getting stuck on a developer coming in and, and presenting, um, a piece of, what they're, and we have to deal with a small section and keep dealing with these little bites. I understand the developer, he doesn't have the master plan necessarily, the market's special and all of that. I just think it's a, so it's a, always ends up a problem with the planning board, uh, looking at one little project and making regulations, and then the project gets added on to and it gets absorbed again into now, now it's six condos on one lot, and then it's gonna be nine condos on one lot, and it keeps growing that way.
What if we were to take out, I think I forgot what the exact language, but a driveway cannot serve more than one living unit or something to that effect? And so anything that goes into a triplex or anything else has to be whatever width is standard.
Well, right, right now I think it's, uh, considered an internal way, right, an internal role.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but a driveway can support up to five units.
Four.
And one, or four, four or five, it's still multiple units.
Right.
And what's happening is you have driveways that are connecting together.
Right.
Like in Moose Run, that's eight units being served by a way that's only ten feet wide.
Right.
And then somebody has a, a party at their house up there.
Mm-hmm.
And you put a whole row of cars around that entire circle and you don't get any, any emergency vehicles.
That's the thing.
And that's the problem.
I think we have to be just very clear in our zoning of what is to be expected for, you know, regardless of the zone, be specific. And that's the way it is. And there, there should be no flexibility, it should be clear.
Well, you know, it's interesting, because if I look at this matrix for parking, schedule of upstream parking. We added a, a statement on, on the bottom, it says the above-defined parking spaces must be increased, may be increased or decreased by the planning board, public safety is not adversely affected. To me, that statement gives us a lot of latitude.
Gives you all the latitude in the world.
Yeah, well, I mean, we could have made Green Peet put an extra spot based on that one statement. So I, I don't, I'm not sure if we have to be that specific.
But does that statement allow, allow room for, um, court challenges or whatever?
I don't know, it says we can, we can decrease. So I mean, his recommendations are to decrease, doesn't mean you have to put it in the zoning, you have the authority to, to decrease.
But if we, if, if we go into and we do decrease or, I, why wouldn't a developer, their, their engineer or whatever, I mean, their side is gonna, they're gonna, they'll have ammunition on their side to present to us and we're standing there saying, well, we still think it's a public safety issue, so therefore we wanna do this. You can't, I mean, nothing seems to be clear, it seems to be judgmental.
Yeah, but part of the problem is you need to stand your ground.
Exactly.
Say no.
That's, that's.
And, uh, you know, if you don't like it, go, you can go to the Z B A, you know. Now, now, to some extent, you gotta make sure that the language is such, because the Z B A is gonna look at it and say, well, I don't know, I, you know, but on what basis? Uh, you know. But, um, but you can just stand your ground, say no. There are a lot of, in the zoning, there are a lot of vaguely worded things. About maintaining the natural beauty of the valley, in theory, I think you could argue if somebody, you know, just as in hypothetical, doesn't do that. You could turn his application down.
Yeah.
Now, would it stand to test the court? No, but how, who's gonna go that far?
Depends how big the project is. It's.
That's the point, you know?
When you're talking wider roads to services, C one operations, and do you mean like a fully paved wide road with full shoulders and all? Or are you talking just an area that, you know, perhaps the pavement's the same width as it is now, but the shoulders are extended for.
Paved.
Paved, right?
So it can be upcapped, it can be, it can be used.
And the assumption is that in the wintertime, if it's a full-width road and they're plowing the way they normally would plow a full-width road, that there is going to be room for this overflow parking even at that?
Right, and it's just, it's a private, you know, I'm thinking about our struggles and wins right now, to get the plows through and people having to move their cars, it's ongoing struggle. And that, you know, whoever lives there in that private setting will probably have the same types of struggles, but it's, it's theirs, I mean, that's, we have to get it.
Would you say that would be the case, Mark, where if you took a standard width road, Tecumseh Road, let's say, plowed in normal fashion, two feet off from the edge of pavement or something like that, that if there was a party in the middle of winter, under those circumstances, and everybody was parking along the side of that road, that you would still have the ability to get, um, emergency vehicles?
Sure.
I mean, we do, we do it on Golden Path Road with the tubing. We did it all last winter with the tubing. We had cars parked on the sides of the roads.
But did you specify that's, that's.
Push it back in order for them to be able to park?
No, I mean, we just normally plowed it, because that's why we have wings, that's why we, that's why we push it back. Yeah, but I, I'm thinking of River Road now. Well, River Road's different than. Because they cut the, you know, when we repaved the road, we reduced it a little bit. That's right. And, and when you get a heavy enough snowstorms, you get enough snowstorms where it just gets to the point they can't push the snow that much any further. And they don't come in and scoop it out and take it and run away with it. I question, you know, I think you could probably get an ambulance down, but I don't know about a big fire truck. I mean, you. River Road is, is more narrow than Golden Path Roads or Tecumseh Road. It's the most narrow. Right, the secondary roads are, are. Right. The arterial roads are never a problem, you know. But the other, the other issue that you have here is, anybody can petition any way. Um, and, and town meeting would have to, would have to vote on it, so having the wider, the requirements for wider roads, if that situation ever does arise, it's gonna be better for the town to have the wider road to be able to do it. Whether we allow parking on it or not, um, and in what circumstances we allow parking, it's just gonna be. And, and maybe you get away with one wider road. Mark was, Mark Kane was talking yesterday about thinking, um, about having one wide, publicly main, possibly publicly maintained road that cuts through there, that then you have the developments off of that road. But then we have one established road right from the beginning that is not, you know, this set of three condos comes in and we extend it two hundred feet and then another, you know, so we don't have this add-on, but we have one established road that everybody agrees that's where it's gonna go. Whether we build it up front or whether we wait. Um, because another consideration here is through this metering project and the other water and sewer things that we've done over the past couple of years. We have a lot of public utilities that are on private land. And that, I think, in the, in the long term, as we try to maintain it, is going to be an, an issue. And so if we can get public utilities into publicly owned and maintained land, that's better, I think, in the long term for the town. Because then you don't need private property owners' permission to go on, you don't have issues about, we don't like the way you seeded our grass, we don't like the way you paved our road, or our parking lot, or whatever. And we've got a lot of that in town.
Mark, are you, are you suggesting, I'm not clear with it, so that's why I asked you.
It would be like the road, the road following Nelson's path.
Oh, no, I, I, I get, I get that, but are we, in, in that area, the, the old, the old fifth hole in that, that lower valley floor area. How would we get and, and put a location on a private piece of property for a road like that? Or how would that happen? The land would have to be given to the town.
And they would save a lot of money on all the paving and.
Well, they could potentially, I mean, I don't know that we build it up front, but maybe we build it as the development occurs, so the town isn't incurring costs unnecessarily, but that, that road is laid out.
Okay, so the idea is curious as to how you get somebody to give up some expensive real estate.
Well, they, they're going to have to build some kind of road anyway.
Right.
So it's not like they're giving up land that can be developed, and if we use, if we, as Wendy was suggesting, if you make it wide enough and there's overflow parking, you could potentially reduce the parking lot requirements there, which would give more developable land.
I think another, another added benefit would be if we could get something done like that and establish where a road is going to be. Now we have an idea of potential development, as opposed to now it's a blind candidate.
That's right.
Exactly.
That's right, so, and it's a lot more, it's more settled for the developer. Because he knows we build this lot or whatever, the road gets extended this distance.
I like that.
You know, the other thing is, we've been taught, ten years we've been talking about the lots that don't get used. I mean, we all know that, that dirt lot beside the skateboard park, the second or third lot for Black Bear. They're never used, or hardly ever used. Even on the busiest weeks, the busiest days of the busiest weeks, people are parking on snowbanks next to the ice arena rather than using the parking lots. We all know that, we've been talking about it for years.
I think some. I think so.
So, why do we keep them as parking lots?
Because the zoning regs...
Well, I know, but why not change the zoning regs? And then, and make, and take that land that's just sitting there, and do something with it, and put the parking where it's going to be used? Or build the paths that are going to let people, encourage people, to go from those lots to where they're, so we don't have on-street parking, let's make it so that it's only a couple hundred feet. But people won't walk there because it's too dark, it's, there's no path to do it, there's, you know, so, there's water that's five inches deep, and you can't walk through it.
Can't have light, can it?
I mean...
People probably...
Well, that's what Mark Kane is saying, the connectivity, the connectivity is one of the issues.
The second paragraph under that matrix pretty much says just that, on that page, if you look, he says, he says in the Town of Waterville, he suggests 300 feet on the same lot by agreement, the shared parking model contemplated and supported public works, but the town master plan needs greater flexibility in this provision. Interesting zoning ordinance has considered sharing of the parking as it relates to the meeting house and theater uses. He goes, though, further on, "In the C1 district, the town should allow greater flexibility. Industry standards suggest comfortable walking distance from parking areas is approximately a quarter mile. Given the population demographics of Waterville Valley, this might be too far, but certainly 500 feet is not an overwhelming challenge."
But if you take those lots out and make them put the parking closer to the developments, you could make that distance 300 feet, or 200 feet, whatever you want to make it.
And he says just what you...
But don't keep the parking where it is, because it's not being used.
And he says just what you said, Mark, connecting the surrounding development through sidewalks, paths, and signage.
Well, we, but that's what we've been talking about.
Yep.
That's what the whole, the whole Village Green project was, it had the big path going down through the middle of it, it, you know, it improved the connectivity, the walking that, well, but then we're going to have to make commitment to maintaining it, and making it lighted, and, you know, finding ways to do these things, so that people will use it. I don't want to build something that's just going to sit there and not be used.
But that's the type of thing, that you're saying we do have leverage when developers come to us and say, "We want to put this here," I say, "Well, but, you know, our parking is centralized, because we need to contribute to that." And, you know, there's a give and take.
So that, the thought there would be, within the C1 district, from here on in, we wouldn't allow to build anybody, other than maybe a garage, we wouldn't allow them to build any parking.
Parking lot, you mean?
Right, parking, they basically, we tell them, "You've got to go use the central parking." We're providing parking for you, right? And that's it, that's what you get to use.
No, I don't think that's what he's saying.
Well, that's what, no, no, I don't know what he's saying, I was just, that's what I thought I heard somebody suggesting.
No, he, I think what he's suggesting is, there is excess parking right now, that's using up land.
Right.
Move that parking, you reduce the number of spaces, but move some of that more towards the development with on-street parking, or shared parking of some sort. Not just make them create, in a vacuum, parking just for three units at Green Peak. I think that's what he's saying.
Which is what we're talking about, yeah, where Green Peaks have, you know, an extra ten space paved out here, instead of requiring that.
Right.
What are you going to do as a developer comes, though, like Green Peaks, and it's, let's say, you change all the rules, developer comes in with a three condo project attached, like Green Peaks? I mean, again, you're only looking at this one little thing, and the whole... Right, the issue is, the issue you're dealing with is the problem with small development. What you have to do is find a way in your regulations to make it a little onerous, to try to piecemeal development. And that solves the problem. I mean, in other words, you know, it's one set of rules if you're building 12 buildings, right? There's another set of rules if you're building three. And if you're building three, you're going to eat up a lot more land, and if you want to come in and piecemeal it and say, "There's three," then the rules of three apply, not the rules of 12, not like, "I might do it." I mean, but that's just, you know, I think that's part of the way to solve that problem.
It'd be a good way for the planning board to be able to see the larger picture, you know, and let them develop it, if they want to build three, three and three, but show us the 12.
I believe that regulations, as they're written right now, my interpretation would be that in the case of Green Peaks, if they came back in and asked for another three units, you have a right to demand they show you the entire thing, and if they're not willing to, to not approve it.
But they could just say, "You know, we're not intending at this particular point to develop the rest."
And then, then I think you have a right to say, "That's it, that's the development. There will be no more, there'll be no other applications, we'll approve nothing beyond these." That's it. I think, I think if you read the regulations on piecemeal development, they're already aimed at trying to prevent this problem.
Yeah, but they don't, they're aimed at it, but they don't...
No, I know.
That's the problem, because they say, you know, you're supposed to tell us to, you know, of any future development, planned future development.
Yeah.
And it's very easy to say, "Well, wait, at this particular point..."
In the case of Green Peak, we'd kind of rule it, because we let them put the road on the tiering property.
And we told them, they quit, every time they came in, they could just change the lot line, and make it go...
Well, the regulations say you can do that, but it doesn't mean you have to approve the next section.
And we've asked them for an oversight of the entire lot, what they wanted to put, and they didn't want to put the expense up to do that. That's not our problem.
No.
Neither were they sure, neither were they...
I think it depends on sales, you know it, I know it, yeah.
No, that's a good, that's a good point you make, Bill, I think the scaling, you know, if you build three, three units, you've got to have parking on site, and if you build nine units...
Yeah, you worry like, like a planned unit development kind of thing, you know, we are open to providing creativity, particularly around parking and use of land for parking, so that if you're building a unit of such and such a size, come in and present a parking plan, it doesn't have to apply by these rules, it just needs to meet, you know, the standard of some common sense. And, and then you can consider them. But if it's small stuff, you know, I, you know, you're tough, I mean, it's tough. I mean, I, I don't know, in the case of Green Peak, you built a narrow driveway coming in as the road, well, you can basically say, "Unless you want to fix that driveway, we're not allowing it going any further," that's it. You built the driveway, you didn't build the road, it's the end of it, end of discussion.
That was our...
Fix it!
Bring it, I think, the last meeting.
You don't have an idea where it's going, it just keeps growing and growing and growing.
Right, but if it's not wide enough, if it doesn't meet the standard of even what we would expect for a road inside of a development, then we shouldn't be approving it.
Or sidewalk area.
Both, yeah.
Then my concern is, at the end of that development, where's that road going? Is it ending there? Is it continuing on somewhere else? Is it going to be a cul-de-sac? What's happening?
That's part of the problem.
I mean, and we have to have safety involved in that.
Right.
And the narrowness of the road, I don't want to see it as a town road.
It's not going to be a town road.
Well, I mean, you know, but...
We're certainly not going to recommend...
But not recommend a town road.
But it wasn't built to a town road standard.
No, it's not...
Huh?
Wasn't built to town road standard, so...
No, no, but...
But that doesn't stop it.
That doesn't stop it.
That's what I'm saying.
We would not recommend that, a town road.
Right, yeah, I don't want to see that come before us, and then, you know, then we're faced with, "Oh, now it's our problem, because it's a town road."
Well, what about this utility thing that you're talking about? Are there utilities running down that road that the town abused, that didn't maintain the lands, or are they maintaining utilities? So isn't that, doesn't that promote the town on the road?
If it's brought up to town standards, it doesn't promote it, given the way it was built, because it wasn't built wide enough.
No, it can be changed.
Oh, sure, if it were changed, you know...
Okay, but I'm a little confused on whether or not the town would prefer to own that particular road, or whether the town would prefer not to own that particular road.
That particular road, although the utilities...
If it was made to town...
If it was made to town standards, that would be up to the selectmen, but, you know, having public access to the utilities is a consideration. I think it, I think that we should be encouraging a spot where it's not private in the long run.
So in general, owning the roadway is worth the cost of maintaining the roadway?
Well, I think in the long run, that it is, because an easement is fine, but trees grow up in easements, favorite plants, people put, put flower beds in easements, and you've got a...
I understand the viability, I was just wondering about the economics of it.
Well, the economics is, you're stuck with returning all of that to someone else's standard. And I think we've run into that several times over the last three or four years. And we've really dealt with it this summer, because we're on private property.
Do we have a plan that shows C1s, I mean, the utilities?
Oh, yeah.
So that we could overlay it on a project that we could see before the development, like have an idea, a visual idea of where these things are before they come up before us, to plan?
Oh, sure.
You have that map right there, we have one that has all the water lines and sewer lines.
It might be helpful for us, like for the, especially this C1 thing, the floor of the town, be able to see where these things are located, when we start discussing, to have a visual idea.
They're on your plans, every time you get a plan...
Oh, I know that.
Yeah, he put it, they have it.
I know that.
They have to put them on, and they have to put on their proposed additions.
But to get an overall view of everything...
Sure.
To better, you know, maybe design roads and whatnot to access these things.
We have those things, huh?
We have, sure, absolutely.
It might be smart that we have a copy of something like that down here.
We'll put them up right there.
That would be great.
Do we have the ability, right now, with our regulations, to force, if a, if a landowner owns a large parcel of land, like we're talking about, that floor area, to refuse development unless the developer, not necessarily the developer, the developer's going to develop and pieces, the landowner owns all the land to begin with, to get an approved plan of where the internal driveway slash road will be, so that we're comfortable as this gets developed, that the emergency access and everything that we need will be there. I mean, I can imagine a developer is not going to like that, but can, we have anything that we can say, "If we, you don't come in here with a road plan that we're going to improve, and that's going to be the road, and then you develop your parcel, realizing that that road is there." I mean, that might be one way to, at least, solve that kind of problem.
You mean the current regulations, or if we change them?
Well, both. I mean, if we don't have it now, then we have to change it.
I think one of the mistakes, and as I'm listening to this, just thinking out loud here a little bit, that we're, we're allowing quote driveways to be of unlimited length. One of the solutions is to say, "Look, our definition of driveway is it can't be more than 500 feet long, that's the limit." Because our definition of a driveway is, it doesn't allow access to public safety vehicles. And therefore, you've got to get all of your buildings within X feet of a road that does allow access, right? This is nothing more than a driveway, like a driveway to your house. Yeah, you can have up to three units, but reasonably, unless there is no other alternative, you can't have a driveway more than, you know, 100 yards long, or 200 yards, or some number. That'll, that'll, that'll stop this piecemeal attachment of driveway to driveway.
I mean, I have this vision of, as this area grows, and maybe you get into a four-story or whatever, how is the ladder truck going to go down there and turn around and get itself out of there?
Well, then, you've got to basically say, there is a standard for an arterial roadway inside of a development, and it's different than a driveway. Right now, we don't have any of that written in there.
I believe when Green Peaks came in, this is one of the things that I was questioning, was the safety issue, and I questioned the safety issue of the driveway that went. And Chris said he was comfortable with it.
I mean, right now, the development's all on one side, so you've got the exterior of your road, but once you start developing both sides of the driveway in Green Peaks, you get into more of a problem.
Well, we don't know, we don't know that that's what they're going to do, we're surprising that that's what they're going to do. Again, it's, it's the future.
That's the problem I was dealing with. We've got to find a way to end this problem, because this is ridiculous to have these discussions as little bits and pieces going on. I mean, I think the whole idea of that is a little...
But that's why we have the chance to manage it all.
Exactly.
The zoning, so why don't we just say, "Here's what we want," and have to put it into writing?
Yep. And if you're going to consider limiting the amount of residential units in that space to some percentage, then that has to be thought out in terms of that major central artery that's going to be put through, that was suggested to be put through there, that it's got to be a reasonable space for a developer to actually profitably use, you know, to build a residential development. And if we're not careful, then, you know, it could waste land that could otherwise be used for residential development. In other words, the design, as well as the percentage, needs to take that into consideration.
Look at C1.
That's a lot of land.
I don't know how many acres that is, but it's quite a bit, quite a bit of acreage. Plus the single largest parcel left, and we have an, we have the ability to try to, I don't know, help shape it, so that it's...
Well, yeah, that's why this is so...
Right, exactly.
Yeah, I mean, that's precisely the point.
Big difference from a town's perspective to a developer, I mean, a developer, right now, if there aren't enough people coming in town at C1, that the developer, he probably envisions development with some retail or whatever, but if you don't get, I mean, if retail can exist now in the valley, and, and the single-family or condos or multi-condo projects are what's going to be selling for the next five or 10 years, then that's their vision. We just need to be able to control, I think, the flow that is from all of the safety issues or whatever we've been talking about.
Or limit it, like where we were suggesting earlier, that here is, the town needs to develop its vision, we need to have our vision, and the developers have to conform to that. And maybe even Phil Kentland can say, you know, "Just tell us your regulations clearly," and we'll follow them, and just, and here's our chance to do it.
I'd say I really like the idea of finding the main avenue through that piece of property that can get the sign, so that we can live with that, and the developer can live with that, and then he can plan his developments, you know, along the way, or whatever they are, whether it's a hotel, or a 24-unit building, but it would be off that main area, how to get that defined, at least that would give a little bit of structure to our thought process as we approve individual projects along the way.
And it almost seems like the general Nelson Path area would be a great access into the property, because if we just make a four-way intersection...
Exactly.
And Golden Path Road.
Exactly.
Green Peak would then tie into the second road, so there'd be two ways to get in.
Right.
One, if the snow's broken, one off of this new road, and we wouldn't have a dead-end road, which the regulations say we should discourage, but we've got a lot of dead-end roads and...
Yep.
Where are we? So we talk a lot, how do we proceed?
Well, I think, I think it's not with a concept, I'm going to decide, I'll write it up, you know, at least, at least agree on what we want, if we... Are we in favor of some kind of an inter, an internal road, or way, or driveway, or whatever you want to call it, that, how do we get, how do we get to see something on a, or ask them to come in as private, so...
Are you suggesting that we build this with town money?
I'm not suggesting that the town have it, I'm just...
But, yeah, we have to be doing the town standards.
Would we have the developers...
Generally, what we do right now, is if there's like, like we've run, the developers got to build all that infrastructure at his expense. I'm sure Kentland would be delighted...
would be delighted to, let us build the road and infrastructure.
Oh, sure.
Well, but that's part of it. You know, what Mark and Kane were saying is to, you know, what did you say? Our regulations are following a lot of sticks right now and maybe we add a few carrots, it'll be more of a, of a better working relationship in our.
Well, I think one of the interesting things that I've heard that I have to work on for a while is the consensus that what I heard Mark saying is that we've got a number of underused utilized parking lots. I think we ought to identify how, what are we talking about? How much? You know, where are all these swatches of land? Who owns them to begin with? And whether the town one might want to move to acquire them. In other words, if we'll give you fair market value, we'll change the regulations, you're not going to need it for parking, we'll take ownership of those strips of land. That would give us some skin in the game to be able to trade some land for some people who want to do some stuff, you know? But I'd be intrigued by how much is there really out there that we, that we first of all would say, it doesn't have to be parking, let's unburden it. And let's see what that gives us. How much space do we then have to maybe put a bicycle trail or something in that would start the plan along the lines of what we wanted? You know, or maybe we trade them, you know, Bill, we'll give you this piece of property, you give us the right-of-way for Nelson's Path or something.
You know, we have, we have these little pockets of unused parking places, but we've got the skateboard right where people would park.
Well, then we'll take the skateboard park out. We're not obligated to leave that.
Yeah, maybe move it over.
I mean, we're doing that every year, you know, that's, if that's a park called parking, then move the lot.
Yeah, move, have them move it over to a place that's, that's not used.
That's not used for parking.
There, it would get used.
But I, you know, but if we all agree that we don't need all of that space.
Yes.
I think we ought to try to identify.
I don't have, I like that idea. Get it identified, see what's there and then decide what can we do about it. However, I'm going to, I go back to that valley floor area where whatever the vision is for that possibly in the future from a developer's standpoint, our standpoint, I'm still concerned with how can you get a main area through there defined prior to all the development? How does that get accomplished?
Are you willing to write a regulation that says the minimum development size is two and a half acres, three acres in this piece of property and that's it? You know, we'll allow you to build it, you know, maybe in phases, but you've got to commit to a three, a three and a half acre development, not mine.
You still can't have four or five 200 or 300-foot driveways that don't go anywhere.
Well, no, but he would have to present his vision of how to do it and then you'd have to turn it down. But that's the other, I mean, we're allowing basically now is no, I don't think there isn't even a minimum lot size. That's it.
No.
Right. It's just percentage covered, right? But we allow, we would allow a quarter acre. Maybe somebody could figure out a way to squash three condos on it.
I mean, right now, like when somebody comes in with a project like Moose Run or whatever, you see the whole, right? I mean, you've got all the lots, you've got the road and the hammerheads. With this, we have, there's nothing. There's no vision of that at all. There's nothing. We keep building, I don't know, it's like little, like a puzzle. Okay, we put this piece in now, we don't know what the rest looks like. We don't even have the picture on the box.
But what are the things that we can act upon now? I mean, I think we're all kind of on the same page, but what are the pieces of that we can pull out that we can put before town meeting? Like, do we focus on road width? Do we focus on numbers of parking spaces? Do all those different things? How can we, how can we start the goal line?
If the objective is to prevent, see, part of what we're going to do, what's the objective? Is to prevent another two-bedroom, you know, a two-unit condominium development type, you know, is that the goal? Prevent a string of these from going into that property?
I think, not two, there's two, two, two blocks is only allowed.
Well, that's another interesting definition. But anyway, let's get, okay, so three.
One of the goals is to have a piece of, a large tract of land to be, as it gets developed, for us to have a controlled, to control the safety vehicles, the ladder truck going down or whatever. I mean, there needs to be something shown. The way, the way we're going now is, I mean.
Let's, let's, one of the big negatives of Green Peak, the way it was developed, is he couldn't sell the center unit. His argument is, is there, in today's market age, there is no value. I look at that and say, well, you know, I kind of agree with him. I think we're building things here that are hard to sell for the sake of a regulation. Why don't we say, look, if you're, right now, we allowed that, I don't know, what did we use, a half-acre land to do that? Just wasn't very much.
Just under.
Right?
I think just under.
Just under a half acre. We basically say, look, if you come in with a development that's an acre or an acre and a half, we'll allow flexibility around all of these regulations. Now, to some extent, we allow it already, but when you get bigger, we'll allow you to build two-unit condominiums. We'll give you, we'll give you more flexibility if you're willing to commit to what the entire thing looks like. We're not going to, you know, give you all these owner's restrictions. But I think that would encourage people to say, that encourages people to say, okay, I can make the whole thing like this, you know, rather than dealing with the piece.
You have to be somewhat careful, obviously. I think you have to be somewhat careful that you do this stipulation and that it ends up being done in phases because the bank won't finance the whole thing and then it gets shorted out after.
Right. I don't know what we do.
Yeah.
There's got to be some real penalty if you don't do the whole thing. Or maybe we require you to build the infrastructure on phase one, you know?
Can't we say?
I don't know. You're absolutely right. I don't, I'm looking at North Face. That was, there was a plan to develop all in North Face and it failed in bankruptcy, of course.
I think the problem, and it's frustrating, and I understand the desire to be able to envision what the whole thing's going to be in the end.
Right.
Obviously, you can't because it depends on so many different things. You know, how's the land sold off? How many developers are going to be in there? What's the economy going to be like? What's it going to be selling during that period of time? And all be really nice to have that envision and you could say, okay, well, this is what in the end we would really like to have as far as roads and utilities and parking and all that kind of stuff. Well, I just don't think you can. I don't think you can project it. I think you can make all the requirements you want on, you know, for size of development and all that. It's just hard for anyone, us, the developer, anybody, to predict what it's going to be like. And so you're going to end up with those piecemeal pieces. And the best you can do, and this is what this report was supposedly getting us toward, I think it's done to a certain extent, is get the best vision we possibly can as to what it will all develop out to be generally. And then make our decisions based on working towards that goal, even though these pieces are piecemeal and small, this is the direction that we should be going. It doesn't really ease.
And that's why I keep thinking, we have to start focusing on more particular development and let's get the wording down for the overall what we want. Let's, you know, the roads are, we have some very cut and dry things that we can regulate that will shape how things are developed. I really like Ray's idea of limiting, you know, it's after us to control what the policy might be developed out and let's, let's stop focusing on this one thing. Let's, let's get some language written on.
If we allow or write a zoning ordinance where, okay, a driveway can't be more than 300 feet or 500 feet, whatever the footage is, you still end up with, okay, we've got a 500-foot one here, we've got a 500-foot one there, we've got a 500. My concern still is, I think, I'd like to see that section of land with at least some kind of a swatch to it, however it's going to curve or do whatever, so you can get from one end to the other with a ladder truck and it can do its job and if it's needed or whatever. I understand a developer doesn't know what's good, what's to be developed depending on the market and all that stuff. I don't have so much of a problem with that as the fact that these skinny driveway areas where you can't, they're not going to be able to park it, but in the wintertime are going to be meandering through in various ways and you look at it and go, how the heck, it looks like spaghetti. How did we allow that to happen?
So, so then with the zoning, you say the streets have to be, what's the minimum width of?
You mean for private or public streets?
Private, right? Because that's where we're starting.
Well, they're not really laid out as whether or not they're private or public. They're laid out depending on what their function is.
Okay.
And they're in the.
Collector, local service, turn around, internal road. On page 22, I think, subdivision.
But just, just thinking aloud, I mean, hypothetically, if Debra Way is going to be extended to the next triplex or whatever it's going to be called, and that then will exceed the 300 feet, then what do we do? Can we then say, well, you have to make the road wider? Debra Way has to be widened to meet these new standards?
Yeah. If you said that, at least a developer would come in now and say, okay, I'm planning, I envision in that area 20 condos in groups of three. It would be who him to take the space for that wide road now instead of keep making something wider and making something wider and, you know.
So therefore, by getting this down, then in the regulations.
It's interesting because an internal road is 20 feet and a local service is only 18. So it's kind of opposite of what you might imagine.
But internal road would be essentially what we would give minimum, is that?
Yeah, to me, an internal road is our condos now, you know, you drive down, but you park on both sides. So the roadway has got to be 20 feet and the parking is off that 20 feet. And that works well for condos, I think.
Well, condos ought to be built that way, though. Yeah. You know, I mean, what if the development isn't like that where you're just right out moving.
Well, you still got the road going through and that's 20 feet. Okay. If you, so you've got a 20-foot wide road.
So can a ladder truck, can a ladder truck maneuver on a 20-foot wide road if there were condos on both sides? I don't quite.
I don't know.
Well, if there was a way in and a way out with this track of land, that's kind of some of what I was getting to. I mean, if you can, if you can meander through a piece of property from one end to the other, there's no turning around, right?
But, I mean, even like the previous page under common driveways, it says that it has to have the approval of the public safety department. So as far as I'm concerned, that's already in all the discussions anyway. But I think what we're looking to do is to provide, you know, both clear access for safety, but also to eliminate additional paving for parking, kind of killing two birds with one stone with increasing this width.
Just remember, where public safety right now looks at something, they're looking at one piece.
Right.
Of something that is going to change in the future, for sure.
Right. Which is why we need to establish a greater minimum.
I feel that's the issue, we have a greater minimum.
Right. So this whole common driveways, I don't know if we start, is that what we want? We want common driveways to act as a, like on multiple buildings?
I'd say, I like somebody's idea of putting something of a length on it, something that the developer figure out how he's going to do it.
Well, you know, there's also, if you do that, there's always a way to get around every regulation. That's human nature. So you just need to put a new access and another
I think this is the problem.
There's no regulation. Someone can't figure a way to.
That's your problem, right?
Subdivision. These are people what we're looking at. Oh, yes. Should we look at? Hi, Chris.
Hello. We were just talking about you. Your safety, so you came down, right?
Yes?
We're talking about, we're talking about safety equipment, getting down some of these internal roads. And I'm concerned about parking and things like that. Where we want to make definitive changes with the zoning from this report that we're having done. So we need some input.
Like if we were to allow on-street parking for overflow, what would that do to the minimum required street width for safety?
I think minimum, we've determined is 11 feet wide.
For the truck to fit.
An open, open lane of 11 feet, we can operate all of our equipment.
Now, is that, let's say, a parked car that has snow built around it because the person hasn't moved his car?
On both sides.
We need 11 clear, 11 clear feet of length.
Now, what would happen, Chris? Could we have something that states that you would be towed? I mean, it's kind of detrimental if it's an emergency and we need to tow a vehicle. Or could you push it off?
We just push it off. Yeah, we could, we could certainly move it. I guess there is an RSA for emergency lane, not fire lane, but emergency lane, that you could designate for the internal roads for the, I think Mark and Kane could. So that would be, that would be an option. That would give us the authority to tow if we had to or enforce.
Yeah, because the issue is enforcement on private land.
Right.
That's.
And for multifamily, the select board certainly has the authority to designate emergency lanes. It's not a fire lane, it's an emergency access lane. And, you know, as the planning board, as these projects come through, can certainly stipulate that in approval of these developments.
See, what happens if a development, it starts off as a three or four building, three condos, no, 12 condos separate, and then that starts and then market, for whatever reason, can withstand a developer coming in and it's a great market and he's going to build a 24-unit, a lot more traffic, a lot more whatever. If we're dealing with these driveways, all of a sudden, and it's connected, that may not be adequate now since that whole tract of land has kind of changed, even though we understand that development doesn't know what the future's going to bring, but we have to have some kind of sense made out of how we can have access and.
Well, I think along with that, that 11-foot minimum lane, I think we have, in the past, every so many feet, there's a hammerhead for turnaround parking, but it's not allowed for parking.
Yeah, we talked about hammerhead before.
So I think as, as properties develop, such as you have said, I think that, say, four units go in, there's no hammerhead, but we have 11 feet. If four, 20 more units go on down, we put a hammerhead in and then, you know, whoop the turnaround or stage or whatever.
Chris, can I ask you a question? Up on Moose Run, I don't know if the name of the road, if you've got the main road, you take your first, right?
Yep.
Is there a hammerhead at the end of that for you guys? That's what I remember discussing with you guys at one point and changing it, making it bigger or whatever.
Yep, there's a hammerhead up there. And that, that's another case where it's, it's an internal road, town doesn't maintain it, but I think that the planning board, on approval of the development up there and on my recommendation, put that hammerhead in and restrict people from parking.
Now, those hammerheads have to be maintained as well at wintertime?
Yes. Yes.
Do we require them?
Ray, I'm just looking at this quickly. We actually don't have any where's a definition of an internal road, right?
I was going to ask you that.
I can't find it.
In the subdivision.
I hear in the subdivision, I'd actually talk about what the specifications of a private internal road might should be.
It defines as a street entirely within an individual subdivision, which gives access to that subdivision only. But it doesn't...
That's specs.
It's definition number 28 on page six, Bill.
Page of which?
Subdivision regulations.
Subdivision regulations.
It says, "street, comma, internal."
Right. What does it say about though?
A street entirely within an individual subdivision, which gives access to that subdivision only.
I was looking for...
Yeah, but I can't find anywheres else in the, in the zoning where it actually then goes back and references a street versus a park versus a driveway. There's something that says a driveway is, can't serve more than four units.
Right.
But I don't know if it ever says what a street is anyplace.
Or a driveway. A driveway.
It does not state what a driveway is.
Right, right.
However, it says on page 21 of the subdivision regulations, that's where it says that a common driveway can only access up to four units. Okay?
But it doesn't say how wide.
It doesn't say, it doesn't specify.
Right, that's what it says in the zoning too. Right.
Okay, so...
For the public safety.
The...
But there are no specifications for an internal road.
Yes, there is on page 22 at the bottom of the page.
Oh, there are.
Yeah. Which has a minimum width of 20 feet, maximum gradient, centerline radius, all of that. Now, the one thing, I think, if I'm not mistaken, Green Peak, that road is either 18 or 20 feet. So it meets these, one of these specifications.
Yes.
I don't know if it's, if it's the local service road or if it's the internal road. But I know that that width of pavement meets, it's either 18 or 20 feet.
Yeah, the main is 20.
The main road, well, the road that comes off of Snow's Brook is 20 feet wide. I think when the turn occurs, that it goes down to 18. So we've got probably the first part of that, which is Deveraux Way, no.
The second part's Deveraux.
The second part is Deveraux, Growwood Road, or Growwood Way is 20 feet wide. That would be considered an internal road because it only services Green Peak, right? And then the Deveraux Way would be the 18-foot local service road into that condo.
Right.
Okay? But both of those meet those specifications. And that curve meets the centerline radius, turn radiuses for his equipment.
Just because I'm really bad at dimensions and stuff, so cars parked on either side of an 18-foot wide street, does that give your 11 feet required? Is that...
Maybe one side.
One side.
One side.
Well, you'd have to, if, if you want to do that, it would be to start with Chris's 11 feet. Basically, see, if you're going to change your regulations to allow parking on the street as countable parking, then you have to say it's got to be designed in such a way that, that in all kinds, it's at least a minimum of an 11-foot corridor is maintained down the middle. And we'll know if the developer figure out from there on in how wide it's got to make or anything else.
But I think what we're talking about...
I mean, right now, we have regulations, you can't park.
Right. I think, I think what we're talking about is the street parking being overflow, not countable parking, right?
Well, I don't know. Whatever you're going to do, but if you want to make sure that it's wide enough, I think the wording we would start with is, you've got to reserve 11. And if you want this to count as overflow parking, that's allowed. But you've got to, you know, you've got to width-wise adjust it so that you have at a bare minimum that 11-foot corridor for public safety.
Why wouldn't you keep it 18? I mean, that's a two-way street. You get down to 11.
I don't know. Just Chris is saying, from a public safety perspective, he has 11, he's going to say it's okay. But if you get...
11 and, you know, what's on the side.
But an 11-foot road, a road wide enough to have parking on the road for one vehicle, one side, let's say, and then 11 feet for the safety issue.
Right.
Just, are we not still talking, you're almost, you're almost got a one-way road? Or one vehicle at a time?
Right.
So the longer, the longer you make that, 500 or 600 feet, you're creating almost a one-way avenue.
I don't think it's difficult to write the regulations if you can decide what it is that you want. The question is deciding what you want and I'm worried about the wording. The wording will come up, you know? That was the only point I was trying to make.
Get, get a road that can accommodate two cars at one time. And if you want to use it for parking, then it's going to be wider for parking.
Internal road.
Yeah.
I mean, you hate to have all that asphalt, but if that's the goal and you want to be able to have some...
Not my goal. I have no problem an internal road being one-way.
Oh.
What do I care if an internal road?
Then wouldn't it, wouldn't it have to have an entrance and an exit?
I mean, overall, but you know what?
One way is one way, yeah.
Well, you say you don't want to see more pavement, but having wider streets that would accommodate overflow would overall reduce the pavement because you wouldn't have to park extra ten spaces.
That was my, my next statement, is we would satisfy some of the parking if you allow parking, you park on the street. My only concern, and if you want a one-way road, then I say, all right, if somebody's going to build something like, say, Green Peak or something, then you've got the Growwood Way coming in, show us where it's ending. Make it out, make it, make it end on another road somewhere.
Yeah, that's how much bring you to one-way street.
Right.
So...
Right, that's what I said.
The parking on street is not prohibited on Deveraux Way.
Okay.
You, the planning board doesn't recognize it as parking. Okay? But he cannot enforce on-street parking at Deveraux Way. It's a private, it's private property. Okay? And it hasn't been designated as an emergency lane. So the police department has no enforcement authority on that road.
Then, the question I have, would the condo association be responsible for internally letting the buyers of those properties know that this is a situation?
Sure, they give them condominium documents that have all the covenants from, that you approved in them. So, yeah, they're given notice, anyone who buys in there.
So the onus is not on the town at this point. The onus would be on the condo association as far as vehicles being able to access that property.
Emergency access, yeah, it's a private, yes, absolutely. But we as a town can't go in there and say, move your cars.
Right. Just like we can't...
But you don't have to change what you're, what you're doing, what's written here necessarily. You can add some language to it. But if you're, if you're saying that you're open to accepting that as the additional parking or whatever, you're going to have the, the two, two spots in the garage, the two spots right outside of the garage, and then overflow parking is going to be on the road as long as we have the 11 feet clear, why do you need to change anything? You just need to recognize it. Rather than make them build the snow removal, all of that, that's all their problem. They've got to show you how they're going to do it, but...
But then like as something grows and the driveway grows in length, right?
But this isn't a driveway. This is a road with specifications that are laid out in your regulations. This is not a driveway.
How does a 1,000, a 500 or 1,000-foot, 11-foot space?
Yeah.
You return it into a one-way street?
No, we're not saying it's 11 feet wide.
No, it's not 11 feet wide, it's 20 feet.
20 feet.
It's 20 feet wide or 18 feet wide.
If you've got parking on the road or whatever and you're down to 11, I'm just saying, how do you do it? Somebody's going to party and there's, there's 20 vehicles lined up. How do you, how do you, how do you get in and out of there with them?
We manage.
I guess in listening, because, you know, I go in a lot of towns throughout Massachusetts, Hampshire, and have these similar discussions. And I guess what I'm listening to right now is, we're, we're not talking about creating a one-way street, we're talking about an emergency. We've got a fire going on. And, you know, we're talking about, we've got to get emergency vehicles down there in an emergency situation. So, I mean, I think when I'm listening to Mark with what the regulations say, you know, it's just adding a little bit of language to, that it's not rewriting, you know, you can't have a road, when I say you can't, I mean, you can have it any way you want to do it, but you'll, you'll stop, you know, the land values are so expensive in Waterville Valley. You can't have a road that's going to be 36 feet wide to have parking. People are not going to develop the land. They're not going to buy it, they're not going to, you're not going to be able to sell homes on it and, and, you know. So, I mean, you have to have an ordinance that, that works, and we're talking right now, emergency. And in an emergency situation, I'm very confident, if there was a car parked in the wrong spot, when, when somebody at Green Peak, they get a set of condominium documents, they sign them at the closing, so they're tied to what those documents say. Documents are very specific. The only parking spaces they have are in front of their home, not on the side of the road. They don't have authority on the side of the road. That's, you know, like Mark says, people can park there, but if there's an emergency and there's a vehicle parked on two sides of the road, I'm confident they're just going to push it out of the way. They're not going to make a phone call and call a tow truck. You know, they're not going to be thinking about, did I damage a car? I mean, if I was in Chris's situation, that's what I would do. But, you know, I think everything is in place at Green Peak to, to solve any of your concerns because it tells them specifically where they have authority to park, period, per, you know, the way we've had our discussions here. And you've, you've reviewed the documents. And that's how, and they sign the documents. So I just wanted...
I think probably, using that theory, as Green Peak development grows to whatever it's going to be, who knows, we just need to require, you know, if there's another seven, three unit condos, there's going to be some kind of a hammerhead or a turnaround area. Build that in. Then if you want to keep going, you know, another six buildings, another turnaround area or something. There's got to be a way to...
I also think that this, this ties in with a lot of what we're discussing too, as far as having a central parking spot within the main, wherever we decide to do it, and having pathways. So that these, let's say I go visit somebody at Green Peak and there's no more parking spaces available. After I drop off my luggage or whatever, I can go to the central parking spot, park my car, take the path back. And, and I think he addresses that very well, even if it were a hotel. Drop off, drive in, drop off, you park your car, this is where you park your car, and you have paths to lead you there. Well, we'll have to discuss that. But, I mean, we're talking about limiting paving, centralization, easy access, walkability to what we have left. And I think we've got such a big overview of, we're thinking right now of Green Peak as, as an individual unit, but there's, there's more land involved.
It's that whole, that whole ground floor area, how it's going to tie in.
Exactly. And, and we, I think as a board, need to look at the overall picture to decide, maybe what was the best way with input from highway, emergency, whatever, to develop this main thoroughfare to go to whatever we have to and interlink some of these roads and then go from there.
If you had, if you could get something nailed down where at least you have one path in and one path out, a certain width to accommodate whatever, and then a developer can deal with that and build off that and connect to it. At least that would satisfy our...
Well, I, I would contend again that the, the way to get some leverage in this thing is if we are convinced from this work that there's unnecessary parking out there right now, let's identify how much, let's figure out where those strips are, and let's take a look at creatively. Nobody can do anything with that land right now. If we unburdened it, maybe we could do something creatively. You know, who knows? Maybe you could get your walkway. I mean, no one can do anything with it now. If we change those regulations to allow some more flexibility, there might be on a development, some ability to move some things around and change some hotlines to accommodate some people.
It certainly would be a benefit to look at it.
Lack of use of, like you said.
I mean, if you're going to, if that'd be the place for me to start, if you don't, if you think you've got a bunch of parking out there you don't need, let's, let's get rid of it. I mean, somebody, even if somebody just gets a windfall serendipity, I mean, you know, well, I mean, why, why, why require that they continue to maintain it?
Well, at least at point, if, if there was a windfall for somebody, at least if you've got a bargaining chip, that was too...
Right.
Some other chance.
Exactly, right.
But don't you think, Mark, it would be beneficial for the highway department and the public safety department to be involved in looking at the overall plan to see maybe, you know, we're not engineers, or some of you are, but what would be the best accessibility for this new road to, to go in and be put to, to combine things, have one road to maybe like connect intersections? We're talking about Nelson's Path, for instance. That would be a junction right there with that intersection. I mean, and then limiting the floor plan for parking and, and like Bill said, some of that parking we're not even using over there. And utilizing that for, you know, and looking at the overall picture instead of these little bits and pieces that we...
Yeah, I think historically, we take individual applications and look them over and there's no, no real, you know, I mean, there is a standard, but no, it's all case by case.
Yeah, and it grew, and it eventually has...
With no direction to anybody.
It has the potential to grow into something else. And it, the picture all of a sudden changes and we don't sit back and say, you know, how this happened, we know how it happened, we love it.
It seems as though we should maybe get some kind of consensus if I, generally, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's going to be difficult for us to come to consensus as to how much excess parking there is. And that's the reason I keep pushing it, because I think, I think if we, if we're able to do that, we're going to answer a lot of other questions in the process.
Well, I think if a town is monitoring the parking, you know, it's a pretty good idea.
Do you have a pretty good idea? Well, let's, let's figure it out. How much, you know, who's, who can do it? Who's the name that can do it?
This is the first time I've ever heard anybody say, there's too much parking in the town where they're going.
Oh, no, no, no.
It's always saying...
No, no, there is, there is the parking that has been required when a, when a project is approved. The, the parking that was required by regulation exists in the town. I'm saying the parking that's actually being used, not the counting the spots and saying, you know, we have this many condo units or whatever, and divvying up all of that parking. All of the parking is required by...
By regulation.
By regulation, okay.
We'd have to change, we'd have to...
We'd have to change that.
Well, you're saying in practical terms, it's not necessary.
That's right.
And I would contend, all we have to do is wait for Christmas week, go out every day and look at that parking lot and take a picture. And we're going to figure out...
We've done that.
And these areas just are never used. So get them on a, let's get them on Mr. Paper.
Okay, we can do that. I can highlight those parking lots.
And who owns them?
We know which ones.
Because maybe they're, maybe they're going to get a Christmas gift they never bought.
We call the athletic club.
Well, the athletic club is, I mean, they have another problem. They don't have enough.
Right. Look at Matt River. They have a football field that's always open that never gets used. And it's all asphalt.
And now they, and they have to pay, that is pretty expensive.
So they've actually cut, cut down a little bit in there with a...
I mean, the Golden Eagle House, look at the space. I mean, some of it does get utilized, but the, the ones further towards like the conference center, oftentimes those do not get used. Look at the conference center.
The North Star.
Yeah. But the question is, I guess, do we look at making them more accessible or do we look at reducing them? That's the big, I think it's...
That's the big, I think it's both.
Well, once we can figure out what it is, then I think we might go to work on a strategy of how can we use that to get what we want, right? Because what I hear you saying you want is you'd like enough space for a path coming from, and maybe a kind of an area where there, if, if we ever built an internal road, it would be here. Well, maybe if, if we could figure out a way, if there's this excess land that the developer, whoever's gonna develop, can get access to the excess land in return for an agreement to do the path. And I'm just saying, it gives you leverage to start the work towards some vision of what you want.
But aside from that, would we still be able to go forward with our parking as far as individual parking spaces for homes, et cetera, and become more defined as to what we want for that?
Sure.
I think that's important.
I would say, yeah. That's more doable right now.
Exactly. Yeah, I think this project we're talking about is a longer-term project.
Well, I think we could break it up because I think there are some immediate areas that you can identify right now that are, that are not used in those busy periods.
Right.
And we can highlight those on a map very easily right now.
And it's all adjacent to this area you're talking about, right?
It is, absolutely.
A C1 area, so it provides whatever they're gonna do with developments and flexibility.
That's right.
Well, I mean, obviously, we got different people owning them, those are, but you can more generally work those things out.
And then we can figure out, like Bill said, I don't even think it takes a whole lot of money to change.
Well, it may be to the advantage of the town to buy some of this property.
Well, maybe. But, but I think we could then talk about the language changes that we need to make to eliminate these areas from required parking. Very easy to calculate that. I think we could do this by next week if you did wanna do the twentieth. I think it's realistic, we could have a highlighted map to show you those areas in a week.
Should we recommend the first Thursday of December? Is that-
It's too late. Too late.
It's too late to do the public notice, because you have to notice whatever language changes you're gonna make. You have to notice those before your December meeting.
Notice them before our December meeting?
Like fourteen days before, so it's, it, there's a length of time in there that you have to have the language that you wanna use. Now, you can change that language, but you're gonna have to have another public hearing in January.
And that would still give us enough time?
Uh, the January one cuts it very close, but yes, you can do your January meeting. That's the last time.
Well, and we've gotten another problem with the signs too, right?
Well, you haven't even started the sign.
So, the problem is, we're not sure that people can make a meeting. I mean, I can get the language, you know, relative to signs, though, but, but we've gotta, we've gotta come up with a slot to do the meeting, right?
Yes, you need a, you either wade through it today, or you have another meeting.
Well, but it can't, but you need a public meeting.
Oh, yes, right, right, a public hearing.
We need to have another meeting, period, because we have to notice the public and hold a public hearing.
That's correct, that's correct, yeah.
Okay. But what I'm hearing is nobody, there's no, no time for another meeting?
Well, no, you could, if you do it, the twentieth, you can decide on the twentieth, and we can post it.
See, we had initially, we had initially talked about the twentieth, I have, I have an hour, I could be here, and Cindy said, oh my god.
So, this is the twentieth of November?
Of November, that's right.
Oh, okay. Well, how about the December? Is that's too late?
Well, the December, you need the language, and then hold the public hearing in December.
Okay.
Because if you wanna change anything, you may potentially have to have another public hearing, and you can't change it after the January meeting.
Okay.
That's your, so, this is your first bite at the apple, is your December meeting, and you need something to post for proposed changes. And that's why the twentieth was talked about. Can be any day next week, but it's gotta be next week.
Twentieth works for me.
I got CIP on Monday, and after that I'm available. Tuesday I'm available. Wednesday, except for Wednesday night, because I go to the North Country Council, I'm available. And then Thursday I have to go to John. Why don't we do that?
I can't, I cannot be here on Wednesday, but I could be here Wednesday at noon.
See where we are at the end of this meeting?
Well, we, we need to set a date. If you wanna, I, I've got enough to get people through a straw man on the signs, and I'm willing, and I can definitely can get the wording done, but, but, so, come up with a meeting date. I mean, if I can get consensus as to what you want in the sign changes, I can clearly write the regulations. I'm not worried about that, so that we can hold the public hearing.
And we can jump to the signs, could you?
You wanna jump to the signs?
We're still gonna need a date, though, won't we? We're gonna-
Well, get through the signs, get through the signs, and then see what you need to do for another meeting.
We'll pass these out. Wendy and I have taken a whack at our wonderful sign regulation. And what I'll walk through here, now, now, let's, this is a working session, this is not, so all of, this is a straw man, all right? What I'm looking for is feedback. Do you agree or disagree, and if you disagree, what might some of this stuff look like? I, I'm gonna try to keep it within the framework of the way the current sign regulations are written, and there are some things in here I've already changed based on feedback from Wendy and Ray. All right, but we'll walk through it, and some of this is pretty straightforward, some of it's not. There's a statement of purpose, and I, and I just say, I don't believe there's any changes need to be made to the statement of purpose. There's a scope and application. The way, this, I think, does need to be changed. It, it right now reads, "The provisions shall apply to all signs," and I believe we should change that to say, "The provisions apply to all signs that are visible beyond the boundaries of a lot of parcel of property, including signs in a window." So, if you can't see it, you know, reasonably see it, towards it with normal eyesight, if they can't read the sign, it's not covered off, off of the boundary of the lot, it's not covered by these regulations. It's, it's up to town square what they wanna do. There are a few places in town square where there are signs that are not visible to, to off surrounding property. I don't, I don't think we have any business regulating those things. And, and, but likewise, signs within a window, if they're visible off your lot, and my definition of visible is kind of readable, or if it's blinking, you could see the blinking, or, you know, that kind of stuff.
Because, you know, for neon signs, they are visible off the-
Then it's covered. What I'm saying is, if it's not visible-
Okay.
There are a few places where it's not visible, I don't think we should be in the business of regulating those. Or, if the sign is so small that all you can see is maybe a pinprick of light from the edge of the property, I mean, beyond the scope of what we're trying to regulate.
What's there now is grandfathered in, is it-
No, no, there's a whole clause in here that talks about nothing is grandfathered. So, you know, if you change it, it ain't your grandfathered anymore.
There are some signs, or one sign that's visible from quite a distance in the room.
Then it's covered, right? All I'm saying is, if you put up a sign and no one off that property can see it, be my guest, you know, do what you want. It's, right, but your mind's at ease, it's already implied in the definition that that's the case, because we have a definition, definition of the word sign, and in that definition of the word sign, it essentially says, one of the criteria is, is that it's gotta be visible off of your lot. And if it's not visible off your lot, then it's, according to this definition, not sign. So, I just wanna make it clear that what I think is already implied. And, and there, every now and then we get into this in-town square, somebody puts a sign inside of a window, and it's really small, and it's not, you know, and, and reasonably from an adjoining property, you, you, you can't see it. I mean, you might know it's there, somebody pointed to you, but you'd have to have, you, you, it's just barely visible. I don't think we should be in the business of trying to regulate those. That's up to town square to regulate those. Okay? All right. Existing and non-conforming uses, no changes to that. Signs must be maintained in good order, no changes to that. Prohibitive lighting. Basically, right now, one of the changes we have to make is, it talks about prohibitive lighting. It needs to say prohibitive lighting for signs. It talks about it in a general sense, and I don't think it was the intent at all. I think it really was, and the intent was a sign. And it said, "It prohibits open light bulbs, flashing, rotating, blinking, or gooseneck lights." And I propose to make it clear that it just, this only applies to lighting signs. I would suggest, I don't understand what's wrong with the lamp, we've got them all over the place with goosenecks lamps, as long as they shine downwards on the sun.
Why, why would-
I, I have no clue as to why that was in there.
Why are we knowing? I know it's for a sign.
Right.
However, the SC group lighting recommendations talks about lighting in general. I understand, like, it's a different kind.
There's a whole nother set of regulations with you with lighting.
But, no, no, there is, I agree, but I'm just saying, but some of them, I guess, we're gonna deal with night sky compliance, or however they write those up, but we're gonna allow floodlit signs, or-
I mean, the only suggestion is, is that, I, I see nothing wrong with the goose, we've got them all over the place, a gooseneck lamp that shines down on the sun, can't shine up, can't shine sideways, can't be a spotlight, all those things are right now-
Some of the goosenecks now, you can see the light bulbs coming right out of them, so you're saying that wouldn't be allowed now. Could be a gooseneck, but you wouldn't be able to-
If, if it allows light to go upwards, it's not allowed.
Okay.
That, that would be, but if, if you'd prefer not to do that, you wanna keep goose, you wanna ban goosenecks entirely, I'm okay with that. What would be your preference?
I don't have a problem with a gooseneck, as long as it, the, the ones I see now, you've, you've got the shade, and the bulb sticks out from the bottom of the gooseneck by about that much, so you've got all this light going wherever it goes.
All right.
So, I'm just saying, if you, if you wanna say that the, you can put a gooseneck, but you don't wanna see the light bulb, and that can shine down on it.
Or it could stipulate that the gooseneck has to comply with the-
Right. Okay. There you go, yeah. Okay, that's fine.
All right. Now, I, I also think we should add a clause that says, they can't make noise.
How many?
Now, but I think we'll add an, but I think we also add an exception, and Wendy pointed this out, unless you get into a case where it's required by either state or federal law. There are some signs that have to be flashing, blinking, because the government says they have to, and, or make noise, in which case, they're okay. But other than that, we don't want someone touching a speaker to the side of the sign and blaring out a message, right? Right now, that is not prohibited, that I can flash, you know, so I think we should make it prohibited.
Yeah.
You know, we don't wanna noise this stuff, right? Right? Okay. There's an, there's a clause in here that gives the selectmen the authority to grant exceptions. The way this is written is incorrect, it, it isn't, when I went back and reread it, it is a very narrow exception that allows the selectmen to make some exceptions relative to lighting only. And I'm okay with that provision the way it is. So, ignore what I wrote over here that I thought it was too broad and too open, I don't think it is, I think it's okay.
So, you're saying no change on it, right?
No, no change.
What kind of-
Bill, do you need a-
I've got one, yes.
What kind of, I guess, exceptions?
The exception, there, there's a clause, you have to read the clause and get it out, but there's, there's a basic statement that allows some wiggle room on lighting if you go to the board of selectmen. It's only relative to lighting, it's nothing to do with size of signs, types of signs. My concern was, and when I first read it, I thought it allowed exceptions of everything. It doesn't, it allows a very narrow set of considerations, requires not only the, the selectmen to approve it, but they've gotta get the planning board to look at it, I mean, it's a whole, and I have no problem with that. As far as I know, I think we're better involved in. All right? It's not a catch-22 at all. Right. And we, right now, have prohibited, no movement, music, audio prohibited, all of, you know, can't make noise, all of that is, is, with the exception of, if it's a state of federal law, then, then we're gonna have to allow, all right? General sign requirements. Right now, our general sign requirements only talk to wind load, and that all signs must withstand the wind load of thirty pounds. One of the real loopholes right now is on specific types of signs, such as an open house sign, we have a size, but on all, on the big signs that we've got around that, we have no size right now on any of our signs, and I would propose that we add a maximum overall size on any sign under any conditions that follows, all right? That, first of all, that we continue to meet the load requirement, ignore the thing that be less than eight foot by ten foot, and, and look at it this way, no sign could be bigger than the existing sign coming into the village, you know, by town square, that's it. You can't, nothing could be higher than that, nothing could be wider than that, nothing could be bigger than that particular sign, because that's the biggest one we've got right now, and I don't think we want anybody building anything bigger than that, right?
Wouldn't you put those dimensions in there?
Yeah, I would, yeah, but I'm saying, it's not eight by ten. I, I went out and measured them, they're considerably bigger than that, all right?
Is there, unless there's something in, in here, we probably can get to it, but as far as, signs can't restrict your view.
No.
As far as driving, or whatever, or-
No.
I mean, that's, you can't.
No, I don't believe there's any regulations in here that have talked to that. And who would determine that it's restricting your view? Chris?
Well, yeah, I mean, I have some info, but I think it's the selectmen that have the ultimate-
I mean, I think you have that implied now, Bill, because you can deny, I mean, if there were a safety concern, you could deny the sign because it blocks, um, view, sightlines.
All right. Or at least force them to get it out of the way they would like to have it.
Absolutely.
Somewhere else, so that you don't have a problem.
But I think the safety-
Good catch, we'll, we'll put it in there. So, general signs, nothing bigger than that sign. There's another general requirement, that you can't have a sign higher than the top of the roof of any building. Because we've got some up on the side of the building, then Ray raised the question, is that the peak of the roof, or is it the drip line? I would contend that I, I think we generally don't want signs over the drip line.
I, I agree.
Right?
Yeah.
And this is mostly town square, I mean, but basically, if you don't do this, if you don't put something like this, and there'd be nothing to prevent somebody from erecting a giant McDonald's on the top of a two-hundred-foot pole, that I can imagine, in the regulations right now, all right? So, we're gonna add some stuff like that. Real estate signs are prohibited, no change, all right? New development signs, they're right now listed, they, three by three must be issued, they must be removed with the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy. This is the one, when we get to a public hearing, what I heard a lot of was, does that really make any sense? Do we wanna recommend, and, and I'm open to whatever the board wants to do here, must, and I, I think the alternative would be to say, gotta be removed when more than sixty-six percent of the lots are sold, or premises occupy.
No, I thought we-
Which would allow more, you know, allow a sign stay up a little more, yeah.
Yeah, I thought we had talked about it previously, something was brought up, and that after the first certificate of occupancy, that it was, we thought it would be like a real estate sign.
Whatever you wanna do, what, what do you, what's your pleasure on this area?
A real estate sign, staking for sale, basically.
Doesn't, you're not allowed to say for sale, you can say under development.
Right.
By Bobby Wild.
Right.
And?
And is that, and is that still a, is that? And is it, there's still a sign restriction as far as size?
Size, it's still restricted. The only question is, is required now, when he put up his Green Peak sign, when he issued, when the first certificate of occupancy was issued, he was supposed to have taken that sign down. He didn't, but until we pointed it out, he did.
Yeah.
But he raised the question, and we're going to get into this in the public hearing, that seems to be awfully restrictive. If I've got, you know, five units.
Yeah.
And I sell just one, you're going to make me take my development sign down?
Why would it be 50%?
Whatever your number, whatever number you like, 50?
Well, because what we had talked about was that the development sign was there, so that people know where to make deliveries for while the construction is going on. So where does that line change?
More than 50, 50 or more, 50?
When you say development sign, though, this is a sign that just says it's being developed by or such and such.
And, and very specifically talked about, you can list the name of the developer, subcontractor. And so it would be like the Green Peak sign. It would be Green Peak, you know, Green Peak Development, being developed by Bobby Wild. It couldn't say, come on into our office, and, and we'll give you a free tour or any of that. I don't think it can, can it? I'd have to take a look at it. It can't say units for sale.
It can't say for sale.
It can't say for sale, but I, I think, and I think it can have a phone number on it, but that's it. But, but to, to, um, we historically on, well, we've considered a development sign is when a lot is having a house built. The contractor who's building the house has put up a sign, Blanchard or whoever. Saying, this is me doing the work.
Yeah.
And it's served two purposes, he's marketed his building the house, and that's where the deliveries are occurring. So there's been a reference for those companies.
I want to make sure it's avoided that a newly built structure doesn't have an advantage over an existing structure in regard to sale of property.
No, right, right, no, I understand.
Yeah.
It, you know, it, when you ride down the road, you would clearly understand, looking at Bobby Wild's sign, that this is under development and needs to probably be for sale, but?
I think it says available, I don't, yeah, I think Chris is right. I think it says available, I don't think it says for sale. I'm sorry, but, you know.
So if someone's going to sell their house, they could put available up on it?
No, 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 they can't. The, the, the for sale signs, so like Barry came in, Barry Fish had a sign up that, you know, where his lot was for sale. That clearly was not allowed. He wasn't developing the lot, he was selling the lot, and that's not allowed.
The original Green Peaks sign that we were talking about, did that not have a reference to Waterville Company?
Oh, I hear that.
Waterville.
Waterville Realty Realty. Yeah.
Yeah. It did.
Well, there was one for a long time up on Paul Hill.
Well, that's what we, that's what, that was Barry's.
The regulations are, and maybe if you, well, do whatever your preference is, if you like the regulations, clearly reinforce that the intent is to allow the name of the developer, the name of the development, the name of the developer, maybe the name of the architect, key contractors. And the purpose of these signs is to, is to provide them to, you know, that. And it is not in any way to imply that the thing is for sale. And not to directly to a particular company.
A reference to the realty company.
Right, well, I don't think, I actually think that was shame on us as selectmen for proving it, because I think the regulations right now say you can't do that.
Yeah, I was surprised at the time. Yeah, because I mean, that implies it's for sale.
Well, you can always imply if you say, I mean, you're going to see this, any sign that, I mean, I mean, when I go to other developments, and you see like even an architect's sign out front, this, this home being designed by such and such, you can figure out that home is under construction. I mean?
I think if you're going to do that, if you're going to allow it, then it should be restricted to the purpose of identification and delivery.
Okay.
Because if you do open it to sale, someone's going to challenge it sooner or later down the line. And you're going to see, you're going to see available signs.
I will write it that way.
Because you're going to, you've got two companies right now, at least two companies in town right now selling real estate, so. There's going to be a problem, potential problem there, so if you make it so that you can't?
We have consensus on that, I'll move on?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll write it that way.
We stand with you.
Well, it's, well, one thing.
I would like 50% better.
Oh, what would you like, as a number?
I like 50.
50?
Well, I don't know, is that the general consensus?
I think you're going to hear from, well, I think you got to have a public hearing and take input from the public.
Okay. I may have missed it when we were talking about it, but how does that handle situations like Joe's moving? He's doing it.
I, we have, we don't allow those right now generally.
Okay, so he's moving, he doesn't have a sign out there?
Because that's a, that's an identification. I don't even know where in the regulations they're prohibited.
Well, it's an identification for delivery, you know?
We're, we're, right, no, no, that's not what it is. It talks to new development signs specifically. So it does not talk to allowing identification, like if I'm, if I hire a contractor and he's modifying my house, I, I'm not sure where that sign is allowed on private property.
On the side of the property.
I understand they have to stay within the three by three footprint that the developer has. If he wants to put the roofer on there, he can put the roofer.
Right, he can, but, but this would be the case of a roofer going to my lot and re-roofing the house. Can he put a little sign out front that says, Joe blow the roofer?
Well, they, they can't.
They can apply.
They try.
Right.
And we have to try to chase them around.
Right.
We're just allowed to park his truck, with, go with the roofer on the side of his truck.
Well, they do that.
And do people have the roofs there? He's got his truck right out front, where you see who's doing it.
I know some of the drivers.
All right. So I'll make a note here to make it clear, and if we do not allow general, you know, other contractor signs prohibited. And we, we ought to just state it, because I don't think it's anywhere stated.
Can include their transportation vehicle when advertising?
No.
No, that's what I'm trying to address.
Of course.
All right.
Oh, shoot.
Let's move on. 50, oh, so I'll write it at 50%, but that's not cash consent, because after public hearing, I can change that.
Right.
Open house signs, right now are one and a half by two, last only till the event is over. But there's no limit on the number of directional signs. And I went around, and like I found one open house sign, and I found four other signs pointing to how to get to the open house.
Okay.
So I think we ought to place maybe a limit of two. You get two directional in addition to your open house sign, I think that's more than general.
So three altogether?
Three total.
Three. One has to be on the property, and the other two point you to the property. Or do you want to say, no, you can't have this stuff?
When you say directional signs, you just?
It just says open house, it's narrow.
Yeah.
But they're, they put them all over the place.
They start here at Tecumseh, and then they, they take them all the way up to Noon Peak or?
And you do have some that, where a home is located, one sign wouldn't do it, because?
No, I'd say two.
Two? Two directional.
Two directional plus one at the site.
I mean, if it's pointing uphill, hope it's pointing.
How about flamingos or?
Rainey did, Rainey used to have flamingos on my, on my traffic call.
Be careful here, all you guys in the sign. It was under one and a half by two. Uh, if you had a flamingo that said open house written on the side, it is allowed.
But additionally, flamingo, second side, you get your sign in, which is acceptable, and then get a flamingo on each side.
No, that, well, unless they're going to argue that it's a lawn decoration, not a sign, I, it, it gets a little vague.
Yeah.
If you don't put words on it, then it's not considered a sign. That's the definition that's in the rules right now.
Can you make it? Would it be, is there any advantage to making an open house sign? Just given that dimension period, it can't be smaller or can't be bigger?
I can't think of a reason why we'd want to, if somebody wanted to do it smaller, we wouldn't allow them. But?
Why would they want to?
Why would they?
You wouldn't be able to read it, probably.
Yeah.
One and a half by two.
Most of these are standard real estate signs.
Yeah.
They're written with a map.
I'm just causing, I'm just causing a loophole, that's all.
Right.
Don't want to have too much.
Uh, change panel signs, and no proposed changes to the definitions of what it's a change panel sign. Likewise, temporary signs, no changes to the definitions or anything else regarding temporary signs. All of which say that you got to get them down. Special events signs, banners, flags. Uh, we need to make it clear, you're allowed to have these special events signs, banners, and flags. Uh, many of them are temporary. We want to make it clear, though, that the only place this applies is to a sign at the event on the private property on which you tell. To get around this thing of people putting these banners out on the town roads, you know? And Gordon, and Gordon is a great example of it. Gordon Scott Beach, you know, they put signs, remember last year we had this guy with the, they came in with the, with the, some, some, some association came in, and they had signs down the road, you know, like the. So I think we'll allow these temporary banners and flags, but only what my recommendation would be, you get one at the site where the event is held. On private property, not on public property.
But down the road, I mean, aren't we talking about creating a better, you know, a year or two from now, a better entrance way to the valley and the others?
You can, you can use what I'm going to propose on the big bugaboo, directional signs. You're allowed to hang your little thing there on the multipurpose directional sign that would say, this way to this event. Like Theater Under the Stars does this now, they put a little sign up.
Yeah.
Theater Under the Stars, and I'm not restricting anybody from putting up a directional sign for a special event like that.
But we would want to be able, you know, five years down the line, I get some wonderful vineyards who come in, do this fabulous wine and cheese, wouldn't you want to be able to put a banner up like towards the beginning of town, like near the turn as well as at the event? I'm just saying, you know, yeah.
Well, wouldn't that, wouldn't that be something that they would have to go to the selectmen for a temporary permit?
Right.
But Bill has right here, it says placing an event sign on public property requires permission of the selectmen, so he's got to.
Right.
Okay, okay.
I mean, we have Special Olympics, like Tom just said.
Right.
I mean, there's all kinds of things that we get permission from the board to do.
Kirby Derby.
Kirby Derby.
That's banners.
Yeah.
When you allow colorful balloons and swiggly things and?
We don't allow them.
John and Mary getting married.
Yeah.
And they, they stay up for weeks, because the people get married, then they go home, and there's no fight. Who do you holler at, take them down, you know? We can, we can take them.
We end up taking them down.
Yeah.
Public works, public safety, terms. Well, I guess that's kind of, where does that fit in? Is that a business sign, Bill? Like the wedding signs and all of that?
Yeah. Well, it's, 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 as I read the regulations, they're pretty silent on this thing about weddings and stuff. And I think we ought to beef them up to say, yes, you can have a sign, if, if it's on private property, you're going to have a wedding, you can put up a banner that says, our wedding is here. Now, you're going to get the permission of the owner of it, it's for your property, but could you put up a sign? Yes, you'd have to get a permit, everything requires a permit. And I, I believe we would allow them to, with the permission of the selectmen, you could also get, I'm, I'm going to restrict down the number of directional signs, these big directional things. But you could, at arterial intersections, you could put up a directional sign as well. You must first try to hang it on the existing sign, if that's not practical. I think we would allow somebody to stick something in the ground, most of these are temporary.
Sure.
You know, so I couldn't put them, allow them, but they can't just put them willy-nilly wherever they want. I think we'd restrict them to the major arterial intersections. That would be my recommendation, you know, and write it that way.
Okay.
For, what's, what's, is sign this temporary?
Well, there are very clear definitions, that it's got to be taken down after the event is over, and no case. Temporary is, it, it, the gray areas are always the, the ones like the Gordon Research Council. They're temporary every year. So at what point in time do they not become temporary? But from the standpoint of a directional sign, you clearly only want that sign up when they're here. I mean, you don't want the sign, right? You don't want the sign up when they're not here.
Right.
You know, so?
Yeah, one hundred percent thought, instead of saying like three by three, should we say nine square feet? Just to, we want to be able to allow, you know, longer banners versus just?
Oh.
Five and square foot?
Yeah, maybe you ought to, I have no problem with square footage, and basically say, you're allowed something that's 10 by 10, you know, 10 square foot.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So you can get a long banner? Yeah? Good? Hours of operations, no change. Business signs. Right now, we allow up to two signs on the lot in which the business is located. It, it doesn't specify size right now. Now, and it doesn't, and I, and like with dimensions, I think we ought to say square foot. Sometimes you want to, you know, that kind of sign, sometimes you want a sign like that. But it seems to me we ought to put a limit as to how big a quote business sign. Now, a business sign is a sign that has the name of the business. It's not directional to get there, but it's, you know, it's jug town, think of the jug town. How big do we want to allow a jug town sign?
Are we talking on their own property as well?
All of these signs are, by definition, it's on their property. But it's visible to the public, off their property. Do we want to make a limit as to how big that sign could be?
They suggest in the, a hierarchy or master plan for signage, and establishing a hierarchy for signs and sizes.
Right.
So that probably would fall into that category, and right now, we're just kind of stabbing it, well, what about this sign? What's good size for that, what's good size for that, but maybe that should be considered as well, and that hierarchy is suggested.
Right.
Yeah, it seems like this is sort of like a stab at what we can get done now, and then we have to go back and revisit a greater, you know, master plan type of thing during the course of next year.
Yeah, we're going to get into neural questions, we get to directional, because that's what they're really picking on, directional signs. But business sign. What we're now saying is, couldn't, here's the maximum, couldn't be, you couldn't put a business sign up that's bigger than the sign, you know, announcing the entrance to town square. But the regulations now, right now, technically would allow a sign that large. I would contend that's too big. We don't want a business sign, right?
I would think that the other signs would be smaller than, than that.
Absolutely.
Well, I, I think like the jug town sign is an appropriate sized thing.
Or the Black Bear.
Or the Black Bear sign, right?
Well, how big are those signs that are over the businesses in town square now?
I don't really know.
They're smaller than what, and in the larger ones, though. I mean, because those are appropriate for the pedestrian area, but if you're in a car, that's too small. In my opinion. That's why I was thinking like Black Bear.
I don't know, so I, I think, I thought about the 10 square foot that I listed here is not appropriate. It's probably got to be more like 25, 50 square feet?
32 by 8, so 32.
32?
That's, I think it's typical of the big city.
And that would be aesthetically the limit of what we'd be willing to accept.
Oh, man, it doesn't look too big, would you? A little ways away. In other words, you'd never be able to get like a figure of a bear on it, the Black Bear, something like that, in anything much smaller.
And I would argue we would want to allow some flexibility in terms of dimension, you know, particularly if you're placing it on, you know, up on the side of a building. 32 square feet?
I would take it out until we get this established.
Oh, until, yeah, right. But right now, it's open-ended. Then we get into the can of worms, off-premise signs. Some definitions. Four or more businesses is defined as a business complex. So if there are three businesses in village, it is not a business complex by these rules. All right? It is just a, something else. Business complexes are limited to directional signs that list the amenities, not the specific businesses. And so if you're in a business complex, if you're in a business complex, you're not supposed to be putting on the directional signs, which are the signs that aren't on your property. They're the ones that tell you how to get to your property. It's supposed to say ice skating restaurants, arenas, and I think that's good. All right?
What about, what about if that complex had its own particular name?
Well, yeah, they can, they can put the name of the complex, but they can't list the name on directional signs if you're in a business complex, and I believe we only have one, which is town square. So on the Town Square sign, you can't list the names of the businesses in Town Square on the directional that are on, that are off your premises. On your premises, you get a lot of flexibility.
Right, if somebody said, well, I'm looking for the such and such Plaza, and you're not going to have it probably, but we'll do it in the future. They could, you could have such and such Plaza.
Yeah.
Correct. All right. So here are some changes that I'm suggesting. The big one. Directional signs are only allowed at the intersection of arterial town roads. Now, what we mean, but we, in a word, we define arterial in our other recommend and regulations. They're the big roads. They're the ones that connect the other roads. So the only place that directional signs can be erected off-premise are at the intersection of arterial roads. You cannot, and the intersection, where Roper Real Estate ended up with their sign is not the intersection of an arterial, of two arterial roads. So that location would get banned. Now, think about this. You know, we're going to end up with these signs at the major intersections. We're not going to allow a sign pointing to, if somebody had a business up Moose Run, you know, directional to that business, because that's not an arterial road. Couldn't have a sign pointing to a business on the end of River Road. Because it's not an arterial road. And I think, I think as long as we stick to arterial, we're okay.
Where is that defined?
It, it's defined in the subdivision regulations, the different types of roads it defines. And what I'll have to do is put a reference into the fact that go read the subdivision regulations and guess the definition of different roads.
Existing signs grandfathered?
Until you change.
Page six, definition number twenty-six.
Well, I think you should think about it, first of all, from the standpoint, is that what you want? These big directional signs that we've got sitting out there.
Well, that's pretty kind of vague. Street and highway use primarily behind volume through traffic?
Through traffic, so it connects to other streets.
Well, we can.
But that's the argument, the rope is used.
Not in it.
No, 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 no.
The width is on page twenty-two, arterial is twenty-four feet.
Right. So it.
There are, there are other parts to that, that's just the definition. It's in the chart on page twenty.
The argument that pointed to the case of Roper is it read inner, a major intersection. And it gave no guidance at all as to, and I'm specifically saying it must be two town or, arterial can only be town roads. There can't be a private road that's an arterial road. And so it has to be major intersections of town roads.
Can that be a three-way as well as a four-way?
I mean. Sure, I think so.
Yeah.
I mean, again, the intent of directional signs is to make it easy for the public to find them.
Right.
And I think we want to allow these at the intersection. Yeah.
So if it comes in Valley Road.
Right. Yeah, pretty much where we've got them now with the exception of Roper Real Estate. So Bill, is this. And there's nothing wrong with Roper's real estate sign. They just put it on the wrong side of the road. If they put it on their property, there's nothing wrong with that sign. The problem is, they put it on the right-of-way of the town.
Well, the other side has trees, doesn't it?
Well, that was their argument.
Well, I'm just saying.
And, but the Village people were more than willing to accommodate them. They, they would have, they would have worked something out so they could have gotten some. All right.
Mark's got something?
Bill, is this going to, are these signs going to have the same limitation where it can only say like restaurant?
Well, let's get into that.
Okay.
Because it varies depending on, are you in a business complex or are you not in a business complex? If you're in a business, if you're in a business complex, which is, then, then they, they can only be like you are today, restaurants, shops. If you're not in a business complex, suppose you want, Roper Real Estate could put up a directional sign. Point, saying Roper Real Estate and pointing down to where, you know, they can't put it up at their intersection, but they could put it up at the intersection coming into town, they could add to that sign. And it would say Roper Real Estate this way.
So theoretically Coyote could do that, for example, but there's just two.
Yes, in theory, they could do that, yes. You're absolutely right. They could ask to have a direction, they could ask to be put on the directional sign that's a point, you know, that would, would point to where their business is located, yes. What they could not do is put up a directional sign on the town right-of-way at the entrance. On, on town property, they couldn't put it up on town property at the entrance to the Athletics. But they just put the sign up on their property, and that's perfectly allowed, you know, that would be no problem. Okay? All right, here we go, moving on. The other thing I'm thinking is. The most directional signs that you could have is three. And even that may be excessive. In other words, you can't put up a directional sign at every place they have, pointing back to where you are. We give you some limit as to how many of these you could have. And I, I'm not even, I think three may be overly generous. Two? Two? Two. Now, now we get into the question of, okay, we've got these big directional signs, who owns them and who's responsible? I'm not willing to go right now to say the town is going to build these or own them. So here's what I'm suggesting. That new directional signs must be constructed in a way that would allow other businesses or special events to easily add a sign. They must be open to all businesses and events, right? So if somebody wants to construct a new one, these are some guidelines for the selectmen in terms of, yeah, you, we'll let you put up a sign. But you've got to build this in a way that you could allow other businesses access to that sign. All right?
They'd be allowed to charge a fee to the other businesses, or is that not?
Yeah, they could go and negotiate a cost-sharing arrangement on the cost to build the sign, but, but they couldn't, they couldn't, you know, and that's their problem, to figure that out.
Sort of sign, sign travel.
Right, you know, and if in the end, the other businesses don't want to chip in and build the sign, then, you know, they, then if they decide to do it on their own, though, they'd still have to do it in a way that would allow it to stay. No, they don't have to build, I mean, they don't, they don't require.
Is there any language, if somebody had a sign and then allow somebody else to add onto that sign? Shouldn't all the signs, is there a language to keep them all, I don't know, same color scheme?
No, but I'm proposing.
You don't want a red one and a banner and then a yellow one.
Right, well.
So say consistent with the look.
It, it, here's what I'm proposing to add, that any new directional sign must be consistent with the look and size of existing ones. The board of selectmen have the right to reject the sign if it's not aesthetically pleasing. So we would give to the board of selectmen the right to turn it down. So if you come in, the board of selectmen say, uh-uh, you can't have a, you can't, Roper Real Estate's a good example. You, you've got, you've got to change your colors, you've got to make it look to be consistent with other signs, you know, rather than you could have whatever you want.
As you know, what people.
Now, how the selectmen are going to decide something is aesthetically pleasing is beyond me, but we give them the loophole to turn it down, to say it's not aesthetically pleasing.
When you get a sign that has multiple, say, businesses or whatever.
Right.
I mean, the, the object of, the person that wants to slot there is to stick up a different than everybody else's, I think. I mean, that's, that's, that's a natural thing.
Well, that's why I'm.
We want this pattern.
Right, and we, we're going to add a clause, the selectmen in approval, that the purpose of directional signs is directions, not to advertise a business or anything else. The purpose is simply to provide direction. If we don't think your sign, if we think your sign is going beyond providing direction, the selectmen are going to have a right to say, uh-uh. Now, like Roper's a good example. Are they advertising the business? Use your own judgment. Or are they providing direction as to how to get into Roper Real Estate? Intent is direction.
There's a sign out here. Would that be, no, the, the multicolored antique sign?
They're taking that, that's not on town property?
No, I know it.
And my understanding is they're being forced to remove that by the Forest Service that's on Forest Service property.
I just got a email this morning from Chris Sununu, and they're still talking, but they are, they're talking about modifying it to more fit in line with what Bill's proposing. So that it's going to say restaurants, shops, you know, where it's not business-specific.
So they're fighting to keep the sign.
They are still working with the Forest, but it's on Forest Service land, so we're not.
It's on Forest Service land. I don't think we have a right to write regulations governing what the Forest Service can and cannot approve. Can we?
I don't.
I mean, this is like the guy who gets the state to approve that he can put up, you know, you know, syrup for sale down the road. Now, obviously he's not getting the state to approve, but that's not, that's state right-of-way. We, we can't govern a sign on state right-of-way.
I'm just thinking ahead, the branding of the Waterville Valley, you know, any colors? You know, are we going to stick with green and gold?
This would give the selectmen, if someone came up with a standard, if we give them the, the capability of enforcing it, it doesn't suggest a standard at all. And I would be wholly in favor of creating a standard, so that the selectmen say, you want to hear, here's a picture of what it's going to look like, or we're not going to approve it. But we don't have such a thing today.
I think the town should have that, you know, pick the colors and the size.
We should, I think that's. Yeah, that's the overall bring together, break down the silos, branding conversation.
We, we can do that, but this would just give you the teeth to enforce it. I mean, it wouldn't, it doesn't suggest that, that what the standard is.
Right, on the directional sign, would, would the business, if they had one, would the business logo be allowed as long as?
The rule of thumb would be the purpose is direction, not to advertise the business. If the judgment of the selectmen is, look, that clearly just all it's allowing is someone to understand, they're, they're known by their logo, you know, and, and, and it's clearly just providing direction of how to get there, then it would be allowed. But no, you can't, you can't put a sign up that's anything other than providing direction. That, that would be the intent. Okay, yeah.
I have a question for you, Bill. I, I have a sign, Mark's Hot Dog Stand, and I put up a, a directional sign. You said that I have to allow other businesses to.
If you want to erect a new one.
If I want to, yeah, I'm erecting a new one.
Right.
So I have to allow other businesses to.
Right.
Put the sign on. Chris is opening up his hot dog stand, and he comes to me and says, I want to put my, you're, you have to allow me to put the sign on, and I say, that'll be fifty thousand dollars, please.
I have no idea what we do with that.
How would we, I'm just, I'm, I'm just one of the.
Chris just sat around and guessed.
For extortion, that's right.
I don't know, I don't know how we, I don't know how to deal with that.
It's a ridiculous example, but how, I mean.
I, I, I wasn't as willing to go as far as to say, you erect the sign and we own it from there on in, because then we own the maintenance.
I understand, and I, I'm not.
And I think the way to solve that problem is for the town to own, basically, if you construct it on a town right-of-way, you put it up at your expense, we own it. Um, it's on our town right-of-way, I, I would think legally, we have, he can't, the private owner, when he puts it on the town right-of-way, he gives up, maybe we have, and maybe that's the thing, we say, he, part of the condition, he gives up his right. He gives up his right to direct what can and can be not added to that sign.
I'm just saying, that may be something we need to think about. I, I just, I can see it's fraught with all kinds of, no, you can't, because you're a competing business, or, you know, getting into some kind of legal fight.
Under that scenario, I mean, if, if it, even if it was on town property, couldn't somebody, couldn't Chris come and sue you for not allowing him to have his?
Well, no, I didn't, I said he can put it up, it's just going to cost, it's my sign, it's going to cost him fifty thousand dollars to do it. I didn't tell him he couldn't put it up there.
Look, so he's going to cut to us.
I just thought it ridiculous.
But if I was Chris, I cut to you and said, I want to put a directional sign for my business too?
No, 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 he's saying that you give up rights to.
Well, that's right, it's already been suggested that if I pay for the sign, even if I turn over, I can still reimburse, I can, I can recoup that fee.
And the answer is no, you can't, it's just not practical to do that.
You would allow, you want to erect another one, you can erect another one.
I mean, so there's no limit on how many signs can be erected at an intersection?
Well, it's.
How do we all do that?
The issue, and I actually said this to Bill, we, we had those big directional signs, like what we're talking about, and we had the issue of people slowing down and looking, trying to read down. We're going to have to figure out exactly how to do that, because that, that is a potential issue.
One of the reasons, I mean, some of the signs, and one, you know what I think, particularly in the golf course. I mean, if the lettering isn't large enough, that's what happens, you've got to slow down to read it. Because, I mean, the car can still be thirty feet away from the sign.
You mean at the intersection where it says it's Waterville Valley Golf Course? That one? The China Center?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the BBTs.
And when I put it up and said, wow, that's a little, I don't think the wording's big enough for moving vehicles to be up there.
Well, we'll have to talk about that.
I think a lot of that falls into the bigger project for next year, but if we can get done what we can for the year.
Well, if you, if you have the signs like the Town Square at Village and Valley Road, I mean, that's a good example sign. It's easy enough to read, you know, and, and it has the multiple businesses, and so that kind of is, is a better sign than what we've had up before.
Yeah.
I mean, it's easily identifiable.
It's just going to create a standard, I guess.
Right.
But I think overall, we're tasked with like in this moment, is just getting done what we can for the short term, both the mess and the marking and everything.
It's, it's to try to avoid sign clutter at the corners.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, it's just try, I mean, I, I mean, but you, but you always, and we always get into this age-old problem of, if for some reason it isn't going to work, am I going to deny the right to put it up? I, I don't know.
Some, you've already addressed it to a certain extent anyway, with this Mark's Hot Dogs game.
Yeah.
There's only a couple of places that are individual or less than two or three businesses, but most of it's in a big business complex. So you're narrowing it down already by making, by saying restaurant.
Or Town Square and Restaurant.
You know, it'd still be an individual one, but I don't think you'll have that clutter of signs that we had, although I, I think the idea that individual, that one sign for all the individual businesses is good. I think this addresses the problem of getting it too cluttered, because you may only have five or six.
I'm going to clearly write this, that every effort must be made to, to get your sign on the existing sign that's there, if there is one. And that only in those cases where that is just not possible, would we entertain, unless, you know, and then you get, unless it's temporary. Then you get, and somebody's going to put up a sign for an event, you know, that's going to last a day, you know, Sarah's wedding, I mean, heck, are we going to, we will have to put up a sign for a day, you know? At the directional, as long as they stay to the intersection, you know? They can't just put it up wherever they want to put it up.
Now, this is looking towards a future too, in case we do have development of hotels within the base of the.
Well, the rules, we, we have to go back and look at again, we have a rule that right now says you've got four, more than, four businesses or more, it's a complex. So if you built a hotel that had a hotel and two shops, I don't, it, it doesn't create a complex.
Right.
Hotel, three shops, it's complex.
Even if it's owned, all of, all of the shops are owned by the hotel?
I, I don't know. I, we ran.
Well, the hotel's got a string of five shops.
We gladly, I think we'll, if we can get a hotel to come, we'll gladly.
I agree.
Bill, how, how does the directional signs, if Mark Kane recommends marking or, or putting signage on the pathways to get up to the Athletic Center and the Race Center?
Are, are pretty much allowed, those are the ones like stop, no parking, Nelson's Way path, they're really not, those are, those are town signs, and we don't, we don't need to write regulations about what our own rules are. Those are, those are town signs, and we don't, we don't need to write regulations about what our own rules are.
Well, but, but like, if going to the race center, if they wanted to put it on the path that goes across Bill Cantlin's land, can they do that?
Basically, this restricts directional signs to the major arterials. You're talking about footpath signs, and, and I...
Are those separate from what you were talking about?
There are no regulations that right now deal with erection of, you know, footpath signs or anything like that.
Well, I know that's coming into our recommendations.
On private property, you know, so it gets down to who owns Nelson's Way.
Well, yeah.
Right. There's no, yeah, and so whoever owns Nelson's Way, who's got every right in the world to put up a sign that says Nelson's Path.
Could something be written that something like that would have to go before the selectmen at least, so you could try to control something?
Well, and plus, those, I think if we can specify dimensions of trail signs, such that they would be literally just good for people who are walking or biking. I mean, as, as signs are talking, you can't see in a car, just on the trail.
Right, and that's what I'm, I just don't wanna prohibit them accidentally.
We are not prohibiting them accidentally. The way these regulations are written is almost everything that's allowed, is almost everything that's allowed, if it's on private property.
Okay.
The only question is, is what's allowed on public property?
Okay.
Yeah, I, well, just start with that. You can do, virtually, you can do anything you want on private property. And I'm gonna get into some areas right now where it doesn't talk about it. But if you wanna put up a statement that says, "All police are wonderful people and we love them to death," and you wanna put that on your property, I can't find any regulation that says you can't do that. That's a freedom of speech sign. I, I don't think you can prohibit those. You can prohibit them on your land. It's like political signs. You can't, you can't ban political signs. So the general rule is, on your property, you can pretty much do what you want. These deal with just businesses. What can businesses do? And there, we can create some restrictions. But now you're getting into individuals. Does an individual have a right? And I'd be interested in other people's opinion. I don't know legally, how in the world we'd ever even control it.
I just see the valley floor, sorry, being built up, even the condos or those, the pathways we were talking about, maybe that might happen, it might not. And I just came up with a visual of fifty signs. Little ice skate, all along the...
Well, I mean, we've got road signs now. I mean, we have a, you know, River Road, that, you know...
Yeah, but that's mandatory, right?
No?
Nine one one?
Well, yeah, mandatory, yeah, they're erected by the town. We're gonna have bus stop signs.
Oh, we have some now.
Right, we're gonna...
We're gonna have more.
Hopefully, we're gonna take some down.
They are, they're gonna take the old ones.
Also.
All right, moving on. So... There's a definition of what's called an informational sign. That's a sign that restates current or historical facts. That's the definition. That's your Nelson's Path sign? It's a fact. These may be allowed on public property with the approval of this selectmen, is what I'm gonna add. So if you wanna go, if, if the selectmen think that having a sign on public property that says Nelson's Path this way, they would have the authority to do that. If it's, if it's the type of sign that's basically just states current or historical fact. Called, and it's actually in the regulations, they're defined as informational signs. Informational signs on your own property, other than the fact you're restricted by size, overall size, gotta be aesthetically pleasing, you can do what you want on your own property. Now we get into some really thorny issues. Political signs. Here's what I can say. I, I think they should conform to state regulations. There's a whole bunch of state regulations governing political signs, and the first thing we gotta say is, you gotta meet those regulations. They are not permitted on public property, including road rights and whatever. And I think if you're gonna erect a political sign on someone else's property, you need to get the owner's permission. Whether it's written, I don't know. But other than that, there's a bunch of rules that's supposed to be taken down. If you don't take them down, you get fined ten thousand dollars. But state, the state allows political signs all up and down Route forty-nine. And there's nothing we can do about it. That's a state highway, state right of way. But we can restrict them on internal town right of ways, and I would suggest we should. Now, I get into a category, 'cause I don't know what, the current regulations don't talk to it about it all. So the question becomes, you get this freedom of expression. And here's what I would suggest, that we would allow, I think we ought to write some regulations. And, or otherwise, I'm afraid that we have almost anything. And here's what I would suggest. No bigger than three by three, can't be lighted, not allowed on public property, temporary. We will only grant the temporary permit for these kinds of signs, must be removed within sixty days. So if you wanna put up a permanent one every sixty days, you gotta come down and reapply. And give the, the selectmen to say that you can't distract from the natural beauty of the valley, which is a catch-all, 'cause you can't say it can't contain objectionable language, all of that's illegal. You know, but I think we could probably say, if it detracts from the natural beauty of the valley, we might be able to ban it. Now, I would be in favor of banning it, but I don't think we can ban them. Now, I, Mark, we need to ask the attorney, because if the town attorney says we could ban them, I would suggest we ban them. But I don't think on private property, we're gonna be allowed to ban.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think as a blanket rule that we're gonna be able to ban religious signs or freedom of...
These are mostly the religious signs, are the ones that you're gonna get confronted with.
The question is, there is some language, I think, state law, as far as offensive language, that there is some leeway there.
So must conform to state law?
Yeah, well, they always must, so...
Well, we'll make it a standard.
And all of these signs can't be placed to interfere with safety?
Right, well, I mean, is that generally understood?
Or is there... Well, if the ambulance or police have to do something or whatever, and there's a sound...
I think generally, I don't, do we have a law that says, Chris, that you can't erect a bush, a tree, or a sign, or anything like that, that creates bad sight lines?
Highway regulations.
Yeah, the highway regulations do sight visibility is required, yeah. I, I think those highlights, Bill, if we come up with language and then get it to the town attorney, will, I think, we would, I think we can craft language that probably can meet most challenges.
Anyway, okay, so those are the changes that I'm proposing, or that we're proposing on signs. I have, I will draft up a revised set of changes to regulations in the next meeting.
One more thing.
Yeah.
The, this last survey that they did, they had the top reasons why people come to Waterville Valley, and they were all to do with biking, biking, skiing. What about signs of trailheads?
Well, here's, well, that's what I was talking about. It's called a informational sign. They are, they are allowed. They're certainly allowed on, on private property, and they wouldn't be allowed on public property with the approval of the board of...
Well, we don't have any directional signs. It gets them to the trailheads, do we?
Not many, but they would clearly be allowed, I mean, if somebody proposed to do it.
And that's what I, that's exactly what I was asking about, and I think we'll get the selectmen's approval. We're gonna get recommendations for what they should look like and where they generally should be. But yeah, we need to guide people to certain places.
Well, first, and it's gonna get trickier and trickier up at the north end, yes. We're gonna lose some of that parking, and a lot of it's on street parking, no, for the trailheads.
Would some of that fall under the Hampshire scene, it got, you know, byways thing that they're proposing to do?
If it was on forty-nine, yes, or Triple I Road, but not, not in town. But yeah, it would definitely be on Triple I.
Yeah, okay.
Coming up with those kinds of things, and I know some of them are, I guess, like forestry signs or nature type things, but when the town starts getting into this branding and trying to come up with a theme, I talked to Ray about this, besides a color scheme or whatever that's gonna fit the natural environment of Waterville Valley and how it should be instantly recognized, whether you're in a, advertising in an airport in DC or something in Boston or whatever, just, it's kinda like the Waterville Valley logo. Is, are there any possible issues about who owns the rights to whatever, or if something's patented, or any of that stuff?
Depends, it is. I think when it comes to branding, like...
I mean, if we, if they come up and they use something that already exists, you must have to figure out who owns it, so you can have permission to do that, right?
I'm assuming that WV is trademarked.
It is, but they want it used everywhere, because it's advertising, but you know, it's...
Just a point, I thought.
Yeah, but I think the branding is also more of an aspect of what type of language is used as well as how it's displayed, and just getting it all on the same page, everyone reads on it.
No, that is, but also recognition, I mean, you know, you go anywhere, you always, even if you see something in the distance, "Oh, that must be that," because light, it's just like that everywhere else, you know?
Doesn't the WVRA have a branding thing going on?
I mean, back in the day, we had a branding book put together, yeah, by John and those guys.
I think they've utilized that, or have they renewed that?
Um, been utilizing it. I mean, it's not as well as it should have been, but like I said, it was almost ten years ago. But I think it's a type of thing that can be brought to the table, and we all sit down and figure out what path we wanna take forward.
I will write these up and we'll circulate them ahead of time, so that you get a chance to see the old and new. They're staying in the same format, rather than redoing the formats completely. I don't like some of the formats, but it's gonna be even more confusing if we try to change them. This is like a half step. This closes down some of the loopholes, but it doesn't necessarily address some of the issues such as, if we want common look signs, what do they look like, who pays for them, and all this one stuff. I doesn't get into that at all, because we're not gonna get there. But on the other hand, I think we don't want another rope of real estate coming up.
Yeah.
So I think we ought to clean some of this up.
Is there anything, Mark, suggestions that we haven't covered?
Well, yeah, I think we could either put in... Yeah.
I mean, yeah.
You mean as far as signage?
Yeah.
What if you, what if you establish, if we came to like determining a set culture of what type of sign and color, et cetera, would you put, like, would the town be able to put like up the basis of it with like the header, and then everybody who wants to be part of that buys a sign which would already be reestablished? Or the look of it would be established by the town and put it all on that same thing, so they'd all be there? But it wouldn't be the burden of the town?
I, I think the cost of the sign is probably the framework that you initially erect. But yeah, could we, we'll put up the framework and you want, you know, your little panel, you pay for your panel?
But, but the panel has to be approved color-wise, aesthetics from, by the town. Either, like, if you prorated the amount of money that was the cost difference to put up the sign, prorate it and, you know, split it up between everybody, too, to offset the cost.
I wonder if Mark might be getting into a little more detail regarding the sign in the final proposal. What's, what size works good for the business, you know, the limit, and what can you see, you know, letter size and stuff like that. I would like to see some detail like that out of this.
I think he's gonna have some examples and, yeah.
And hopefully tomorrow.
Yeah, and hopefully tomorrow. They're working on it.
Will we get that emailed?
You're gonna get an email as soon as we get it.
Okay, good.
Now, he did say that it might be Saturday, which means you'll get it Monday, but as soon as we have it, you'll get it.
I'm wondering, format, how are we gonna be able to sit and read it?
I'm going to send you a word document.
Oh, no, no, I meant, I meant to ask you for sending. I mean, let's get the Wetlands study and, you know...
No, well, I don't, I, I think that's what he's struggling with right now, is how to get it so you can read it. He's trying to pare it down. There may be a lot of appendices, and those may be separate.
But you're gonna get...
The basis.
The basis in one document. It might be thirty or forty pages, but you're gonna have to read through it.
I would expect it should be, yeah, I would think so too.
Was there any direction yet on the Wetlands map? Has that been produced or anything?
I have not, we've not produced it yet, but we're working on that. Bill Cantlin did tell me that he, if I can't find the town's copy of that parking map, he has it. I'm gonna go over to his office and work with Jan, and we'll get copies made. So I will have that today or tomorrow, so if you guys wanna meet next week and talk about that, then we can. 'Cause I will have multiple copies of that map for you to look at.
Okay.
Okay, well, pretty good with the signage. Let's just talk a little bit about the writing here. We did have a writing committee at one time, and Bob was on it, right, Bob?
Thanks, yes, I was.
Yes, you were. I wrote it down.
That's good.
Well, Nancy, actually, she's not here.
Well, if you looked at the electronic copy of what Mark Kane sent you, you see there's a fifty-page document on lighting attached to his recommendation. So there's a lot of language out there already. I don't know that you need to reinvent that language. I think we, we put our current section in the zoning ordinance in prior to a lot of that work being done. So there's a lot of things in there about specific lumens and everything else. What we have been struggling with is enforcement of what we have. This is a very technical issue. If you look a lot, at a lot of the lighting around town, and much of it's been replaced in the last four or five years, I don't personally think that it meets all of the intents of, of our zoning ordinance. But if you look at, if you get the owner's manual for a lot of these lights, supposedly, they will meet most, if not all, of our ordinance. But I still don't think that they, that they meet the spirit of what we were trying to do. But Mark also identified through the surveys, that lighting is a huge concern for a lot of people, whether they're residents, guests, or property owners.
Yes.
So I, I don't know how to balance those out, because we obviously have to do something to be more pedestrian friendly and get the lighting out there. But if you look at our ordinance, it's very restrictive.
And I liked what Mark had to suggest about having separate rules for the C one, where we're trying to get more pedestrian focus and tighter regulations outside of that, as far as the dark skies goes. I think that made a lot of sense.
I think a lot of this, go ahead.
Well, C one in VC, because a lot of the, no, I think he put just C one in, but I'd say, you know, you gotta look at the VC immediately adjacent to it.
Yeah.
Because that's where a lot of our pedestrian traffic would originate from. So I think we gotta go a little bit beyond what even Mark was saying.
My, my understanding was that, or my understanding is, if a light fixture or whatever, for whatever reason, needs to be changed, whether it's old or, or destroyed or whatever, that the new one should, um, it's not grandfathered in and you can put the same one back, you need to put the new one up to the new specs, right?
Yes, yes.
But that doesn't, I mean, a contractor never, where do they go to have to report this?
Information.
I mean.
Well, they'd get a building permit if it's over a thousand dollars.
But, a, a, a si- a single light in a condo complex, everybody puts back the same one. And I can understand that you wouldn't wanna have three different kinds, but what do you do about it?
We can't do anything about if, like, the big globe ones. If they're gonna replace one of those, that's gonna happen, we're not even gonna know it was.
Well, that's what I mean, that's, that's what happened is now, you talked a little bit before about enforcement, if you don't even know what happened, you can't enforce it.
What I'm seeing, though, is there are a couple of developments that have replaced every light in their development in the last two or three years. And they did it, they probably voted on it at their association meeting and, and then they went and they did it. Now, you get the, you get the owner's manual on those new lights, there seems to be, they seem to be very bright, they seem to be, but you look at the owner's manual and it meets the lumen requirements in our, in our ordinance. So there's really, but we didn't have a say, we didn't approve as a town those actual fixtures. We, they just have to confirm, conform with the lumens and, and all of that.
Can we require LED, or are they already LED rather than standard?
Not a lot of them in town are LEDs. I think our two solar-powered traffic lights are among the only LEDs in town.
So can we, is that something we can require?
Uh, if that's what you wanna require, sure.
I mean, it's more environmentally friendly?
It's more environmentally friendly, they're easier to cut off with fixtures, light can be directed in a lot easier, but they're, they don't provide the same illumination patterns that, you know, you gotta be careful about how you do it because it can seem very dark with LED lights around.
Can we, but can we require it for certain uses? Like si- like signage coming into condos, ordinance, and things like that, as opposed to major lighting?
I don't see why not.
Yeah.
Sure, why not? But I'm not a lighting expert in.
Exactly.
I've looked at that.
You know.
Yeah.
There's a lot of stuff that's.
It was intense.
Yeah, so I was wondering if there's anything that he recommends that we can incorporate this, for this program.
Well, he, some of the, I read through some of the additional stuff, and I mean, it, it talks about, the light being, being emitted, and he's, and in there, there are diagrams of lights. And if you look at all of those diagrams, yeah, there, there isn't, I think there's another page maybe too, some, it showed five or six.
Oh, sure. There's all sorts of.
But anyway, none, none of them show, if you looked at it, I mean, if you look at it, if you, if you're looking at it straight on, not if it's mounted up here, but if you look at it straight on, in, in, in none of those can you see the bulb itself. You just can't see it. And, you know, um.
Well, that's like.
I mean, that's our biggest problem, I think, in, in town. You can talk about lumens or whatever, but mostly it's because it hangs down and it goes wherever.
We are the biggest, the town is the biggest violator of its own ordinance.
Look at the school, I don't want us up, I'm glad you brought it up, yeah.
No, it's, but again, do we want our parking lot at the school to be necessarily a dark place? I don't think we do.
No.
It's getting dark at four-thirty now.
Right, right.
And so.
No reason to be on at three in the morning.
No, but it.
They're on a timer and they shouldn't be on at three in the morning, and if somebody's seeing them on at, I think it's ten o'clock, they're supposed to go walk.
Wouldn't.
And then come on at five or something like that.
Couldn't, but, but couldn't there have been a light at the school? Instead of, instead of a light like this where you can see all, but couldn't it be, have been putting a light by the sidewalk or something and having it shine like towards the school, instead of back that way?
Oh, sure, there could have been any kind of lighting.
Yeah, they chose not.
But they chose not to.
I mean, you could still light up the whole area, it'd be a safe environment, it just wouldn't be going that way.
Who didn't ask you?
The school.
Why, why didn't, if it's, if the school is owned by the town, why didn't they ask?
The school's not owned by the town.
Well, we support it.
Yes.
We do, and, and they.
But there's a separate board.
A separate, yeah.
And, and when they asked you the appropriate, when you gave them the money, you gave them the authority to do what they wanted.
Well, but they, they still have to comply to zoning ordinances, don't they, or is it not because it's town something they don't?
I don't know, I don't think so.
I think you can do anything if you do it for the children.
Okay, you're now on TV.
I like the straight face.
I don't think you said that, Bob. Scared me to death.
Ooh, ooh, you are, you are on a hill.
We already is.
I'm gonna tell Louise to watch this movie.
It didn't get loud enough.
How many grandchildren do you have?
No, but that's just one example of, you know, we've got to have language where we can control that kind of thing. I mean, we want proper lighting, but does it have to be that way?
Right.
Right.
Well, it sounds like we're not ready to make any changes for this go around, for the town.
Oh, no, no, this is like.
I, I would doubt it.
So we can scratch open outdoor lighting.
It's intense.
That just leaves us the easy wrap-up of the parking.
Everything else could look easy compared to that.
I don't know if we're ready for the parking.
Sound like you're gonna cry.
Well, I don't know how you, how you get to it, I guess what we probably should do is just go down line by line of what he's recommending to stay on some kind of a schedule. I don't know how to attack it.
But, but do you think it, I mean, parking for units is one thing, right? But if we're talking about the overall parking of the village floor, do we get the town involved as to what we think would be a good roadway so we could base it on that, or some direction?
You are the town.
Yeah, we are. Well, it, it.
Highway Department.
The, the key, I think, that he's recommending in C one is the shared parking concept.
Right, but what's critical, I mean, should we look at what's critical for us to get initially passed so that we can move forward more next year, like the garages is obviously critical. And that to me seems like the most important thing. Um, are, are the other aspects really critical for us to be able to move forward? Do we look at it that way? I mean.
Well, I think one thing that we could probably agree on is the garages. Is, is copying.
So we need to reword that?
Attached garages, right?
Well.
Does detached count as parking spaces now?
Right, any garage, cause we have residential as well as commercial, we'll need to probably differentiate from residential and commercial.
But even in presidential, isn't, isn't one of the, doesn't one of the units have a detached garage?
I don't know.
Or detached from its own unit?
But that's, that's okay, I don't think, I think no matter what, they should count the parking space, I agree.
I don't think so. They're all attached.
They should count, I agree.
They're all attached.
Yeah, they are all attached.
They're all attached.
But either way, I mean, there are homes, I think either way they should count. Is writing the language for that something?
Maybe the one on the end.
There's one on the end.
The one on the end, I think it might be detached, yeah.
Really?
Yeah, but I think for sake of parking, it doesn't matter.
But I think they have an overhead connectivity up there somewhere, so I think it is attached somehow.
Two-by-four bridge?
Yeah.
At the presidential, the, the units that are on the corner, if people.
Which corner?
Uh, the main, the ma- the main road corner, whatever.
Like Snows Brook Road.
Yeah, and, um.
Yeah.
You have, are there not two sets of garages?
There are two garages. Right there, for that one building.
Two single garages?
Two single garages.
So, so, and they belong to different corners?
Correct.
So if somebody parks a car in and then parks a car in front, one guy can't get out? Kind of, no, I understand the story goes, I'm just saying.
You deal with that all the time.
Well, part, part two of that, part two of that, Mark has the guest space and he's recommending one additional guest space be provided for ten units of multifamily use. So I think that kind of goes hand in glove with the, with the garage parking, because, uh, we count the garage, then those units have four parking places, they got plenty, they still don't have room for guests.
Were you talking about that one specific complex now?
Well, in general, I mean, that, that would apply to the timbers.
You're looking at this one?
Yeah, that would apply to the timbers, too, which is.
But do, I mean, just broad strokes for what's reasonable for us to do and do correctly, I don't wanna rush into anything. Do we need to do anything besides refine the zoning on garages for this year, that's what I'm, I'm thinking.
Well, I see two, two of the things in here that I'd, that maybe we might consider.
Okay.
All of what he's suggesting deals with parking with inside the center room, okay?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
It, so, so first of all, the question would be, do we wanna create a special zoning district inside that group right now? As it relates to parking, as we've done up, you know, as it relates to the people up in the academy, all right? So we, within that, create a special zone and, and, and put some language, we have no idea what the rules should be, but put some language in there that allows, uh, someone, some authority, the flexibility to consider solu- or, you know, solutions that maximize the beneficial use of that inside space as it relates to parking in roads and trails. So that allows, you know, just, and I don't know who, I don't know if wanna give it to the selectmen or give it to the planning board, but we, you know, that, you know, you can come in with some, you don't have to follow the rules. That within this thing will allow some exceptions to the rules, you, you, the burden is on you to demonstrate that what you propose to do, it's consistent with the concept. Now, we could put something like that in now. It doesn't answer what we would think is acceptable, but if somebody came in with a proposal in the next six months, it'd give you the option to at least talk about it, all right? Uh, that's one change. The other change that I see in here and is whether, is what does the planning board wanna recommend to the board of selectmen that we allow off-street parking on non-arterial roads? Because right now, there's an ordinance that says no parking anytime, anyplace, on any public road. Now, I'm, I, I don't think we wanna allow public parking on arterial roads, but non-arterial roads.
Well, you know, you get into all those problems that Manchester has, that off-street, you know.
Well, he's recommending it, that's why I know.
I know it, I know, but then.
So that's the other thing you could do. But I, we would have to, would that have to be for town meeting if we want to change those rules? Or could the selectmen just do it on their own? Is there a time requirement? Off-street parking. If we wanted to relax off-street parking on non-arterial roads, can the selectmen just do that?
Yes.
We don't need town meeting.
You do not.
All right, so there's no time restriction, all right?
Okay, okay.
So that's another thought of what, I don't know how bold we wanna be, which is say, look, within this ring road, we'll create a special zone, and within that zone, uh, if, uh, developers, if they, if they want, on a sizable chunk can come in and propose some alternatives to the standard parking rule.
But we have time to hash that out.
Okay, so. All it does is it gives you the authority to, to, to do something different, that's all. And you don't have to do anything at all.
You, you would.
But with the.
You still need a certain size of a road or whatever to, how traffic and emergencies.
Yeah.
And it would allow you to change all of the rules that are now written down if you chose to do it, that's all.
I'm, I'm, I'm more concerned if we're gonna try to get something done, what we can now, put the rest off, that it is with an eye towards the immediate potential future development, which seems to be Green Peaks. And the extending of that and number of parking spaces, or having a hammerhead, or connectivity in the future, or those kinds of things.
With the lanes, with the lanes of the driveway.
Right.
The garages, I mean, honestly, they have three or four parking spaces per, which is well above everything for garages. So it's, it's a real point.
Except, okay. Right.
As far as parking goes.
Right, uh, uh, the single unit now, that is right now, in, in the first building, uh, uh, in the, how do you wanna call it? One building, three condos, I don't know, um, that only has three spaces. The others, if you count the garage, you have.
But it's still higher than the two that we require.
No, 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 I know, but we're talking about do something different, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, but tho- those areas, we always talk about how they're not enough and it's, it's a problem, but they don't seem to be a problem. It's the golf course and it's the athletic center and those public areas that seem to be where the problem is. We're always concerned about these units not having enough, but I don't remember it being a big issue anywhere realistically.
When there are functions or other things, whether it's a GNO or whatever, you've got.
Well, that's gonna happen anyway.
No, I know that, but I'm just, I'm just saying, I, I don't see the, the, you have three units. Two, two underneath and two limited common in front of the doors, I, I would've probably thought that the middle unit should have four also, so put a, put another common one on the side somewhere, I don't know.
I disagree, I disagree. I disagree. I mean, this, this not, it's, they're already fifty percent above their regulations on the lowest one, so why make them do another one?
What happens if somebody finishes the basement and creates two or three more bedrooms?
The onus is on them, they know what they have when they buy the unit, we can't.
No, but the reg- aren't the regulations by bedroom? No?
Well, three or more.
Large, three plus, three plus bedrooms is two.
For a small one to two is one point five.
For a large three plus.
And those are all.
Okay, so if you count the garage and you have the other two in front, then everything's fine.
And that includes the garage.
Right, it's just the garage has always been our tripping point.
Yeah, but that's all limited common area then, all of those parking spaces are limited common area, so there's no.
Right, right. There's no common area, right, right, it has to be, otherwise.
There's no common area.
But there is proximity to other parking, which they demonstrated with the first stage that they had access to.
Yeah, but you made them pay five more spots.
No kidding.
In Black Bear, when you approved those three lots. Remember, we had that conversation and they had to identify five spaces.
Yes. Those specific lots, yeah. Yep.
The other thing is, you don't, I, I'm gonna get back to how this project potentially could grow and what it could look like and how it impacts the area, we keep dealing with something that we don't know.
We don't know.
Yeah, but the unknown is the unknown.
That's how we're gonna see this.
I know, I know.
Yes, yes, yes.
No, but we know the situation.
But, yeah, there's so much bigger that could come in that we don't know.
You mean, really, do we want?
Well, it's like saying, if you don't get, if you, if you build three more of these buildings and that's the end of it, then fine, end it with a hammerhead or something, or, I mean.
But we don't know that.
I, I, I know, and we don't know what the, what's gonna be attached to it the next phase of the next development.
But we can't make regulations around what somewhat one person developed them, we have to make regulations for how we want the, the center to be.
Well, let's, let's talk about.
Ray's got that, Ray's got, you got that statement, right?
What's that?
The one that talks about the, the discretion of the, for the parking, the planning board?
The one you had to us?
The one with the matrix?
You done it, uh.
It's, it's, yes, it's on page thirty-eight.
Yeah, it's on, yeah.
It's in the ma- at the bottom of the matrix.
So the bottom, bottom line is, if at some future point, some, somebody comes in with development and we look at it, we can say, we don't like that, so, yeah.
I, I, I'm gonna pick up for a minute on Terry. I think if you, you know, if we step back, it's not the detail of the regulations, it's that every now and then, they don't seem to work. He, he's pointed up two cases where they don't work, right? Whereas the, clearly they don't work in the case of the sports center, I don't know what formula we use, but we've got a situation where. but we've got a situation where it's not appropriate. The golf course, they might work if the people actually walk the four hundred feet that they have to walk, but you know, but 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 they don't.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, you know, I, so I'm, I'm thinking about that, it's, it's, you you know, whether we need some rules that essentially say when, you know, that practicality is the most important thing. And that when years of real experience indicates that you've either got too much or too little parking, you know, we can adjust these. Um, you know, we can relieve the burden of parking or we can add the burden of parking. Um, or or otherwise, we're gonna go on forever with no solution to the sports center, you know?
Can I ask a question? And I wasn't privy to it, I wasn't here at that point, when, when the water bill, the athletic center was developed, did they have a um, an understanding with the lodges that were here that they would be able to participate in the use of that, wait, the athletic, the pool, et cetera? Do you know that? And based on that, was there allowed for the use of cars coming over from those various locations to park at the athletic center?
Right.
Parking regulations are based on square footage and number of tables and restaurant.
And they don't work, that's the problem.
And number of seats in a restaurant problem, right.
That's it.
Well, we don't even know how many, what what's really required, if we calculated what was required, we don't, we don't know what that number was.
Right.
And the other side to that.
And and it was done, I'm, I'm gonna be honest with you, it was done back when Tom was still here.
Yeah, right.
For all I know, they just said, here's the plan and they they approved it, I'm not sure they did anything.
Right.
So aside from that, you've gotta look at upstairs at Sean's, Sean has expanded, he's got more tables.
Well, I mean.
Did upstairs, the middle section and, now, again, did he have to come before anybody?
Yeah.
Right.
Especially civic, isn't it?
No, no, that's what I'm suggesting, that when, 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 when somehow, and I don't know how we do it,
No.
but there needs to be a practical side of this, when experience shows that what you've done is not adequate, or is in fact not, you know, not required.
Right.
You know, we can, we can change the overall requirements based on some history of practical experience. And 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 I, it. You know, otherwise, we're, we're constantly, 'cause you know, we, you know, we're gonna be confronted with, I don't have to do anything, you know, you approve this. Well, I I I don't even know whether, Mark, whether we can do anything like that.
Um, well, yes, I think, I think that the language that is currently in the zoning ordinance.
Right.
The town has given the planning board the ability to do exactly what you just said.
Okay.
In, in a particular instance, they can say, you can say, we don't, we don't agree that in this particular instance, that what it says here is gonna be enough parking. Or you can say, we think that we can cut down the amount of parking because of X, Y, and Z. And and that is purely at your discretion.
As it relates to new or can we apply it as it relates to existing?
You can. As it relates to new. Existing, I don't think we can, I don't think you can go back and change uh, and make them build more parking, unless there's a public safety issue, then maybe the Board of Selectmen can call a property owner in and say, look, we know that we approved you with this number of parking spaces, but we really think you need ten more spaces and it's a public safety issue. Um, and and we need to address how you're gonna fix that.
Isn't that what happened though? Didn't they add that extra parking?
Well, they they're now plowing, well, they're supposedly.
Tom tried.
You talking about the sports center?
This.
When, when Tom came in and told us that he took care of it, and you could put another twenty to thirty cars there or whatever, and on the busy weekends, I mean, I made it a point to go and look how that parking was out back, I mean, three or four times I did this, and I, and and all, I, I, I'm on, I'm on camera now, so I'll be careful, but, uh, it didn't address, to me, it didn't, it didn't address the issue, the way the cars are parking, you you can make the space in between the, the ends of the cars bigger, but
I think.
cars aren't parking there, you can get out.
I think the selectmen, the selectmen could contact the athletic club and ask them to come in and say that there is a public safety issue, what are we gonna do about it? And I, that's part of the enforcement piece.
I mean, unfortunately.
And, but as far as making them physically build another parking lot, I don't know, that's, that'd be a negotiation.
And and truth. And truthfully, it probably only comes into play, what, fifteen or twenty percent of the time?
Oh, less than that.
Less than that.
Less than that?
Yeah.
I mean, it's five percent, it's maybe.
Peak, peak holiday, that's it.
It's almost like if they had a flat area in the wintertime, they could just plow and you could really put.
Pop the outdoor pool.
Real, no, but really put another twenty cars, not.
Or if we only had a transit system that worked correctly, they couldn't have any.
Correct, there, there's a good point, right there.
I've parked at the Golden Eagle and walked over to the, to the Coyote. 'Cause there's no parking, I, you drive around three times and you say, alright, I'm out of there, you know?
Or you could park at the school. No, we have two, yeah.
And I go park.
Yep.
Because I was leaving somebody, otherwise I'd have gone somewhere else.
Maybe sign, maybe like the Coyote, additional parking at the school or Golden Eagle or whatever.
Yeah.
Oh, they, they promised that too, and I mean, and part of it is, it's that they get the shuttle bus, they would, you know, they could park over there, they show a map.
And the.
I know.
It didn't happen.
People don't behave that way, that's the problem, that, you're fighting human nature.
No.
Yeah.
Right.
And until we tow a couple more cars away, you know, on Route forty-nine, no one's gonna pay attention, now we tow cars, they pay attention.
Yeah, exactly, and we threatened him to that, we were gonna do that, and he got all upset.
Yeah.
Right.
No, we towed cars.
Oh, I know, but it, but he was upset that we did it.
Well, you towed them.
How long does it take to get a car towed, just curious, I mean, somebody's eating dinner, right, you're there for an hour and a half?
It's really. How long does it take, the guy, you know, who got towed, who broke a blast.
Yeah, 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 no, I know, but.
He was in playing tennis, they never made the announcement in there.
Ah.
They towed his car.
But I mean, somebody comes from.
Cost him a couple hundred bucks.
Somebody comes from Campton, comes up, takes the car and, brings it to Campton or something?
Yes. Yeah.
Yep.
By the time the tow truck, truck comes, the guy's eating dinner and he's already gone home.
Yeah, but it works, it happened to me over in Kennebuck over the time.
It did?
Yeah, I, I don't do that anymore.
Oh, that's true, over there, it's brutal, it's brutal up there.
I've, I've gotta get home and get to work, are we meeting here, or?
Right, well. I guess just talk.
Yeah, we need, are we gonna try to meet at least on the sides or, I mean, the parking, I agree with her, I mean, the one thing that sounds like you can do right now is relax the rule on garages.
Absolutely.
Other than that, doesn't sound to me like we're anywhere.
Yeah, I know, it's unfortunate.
But we don't wanna rush it and do something silly.
No, exactly, right, I know, it's just too much, and if we, and if we do what you suggested, make, give us the authority to
I, yeah.
to look at something, we can't agree among ourselves.
Right.
So that that doesn't work.
Right.
Uh. We've somehow gotta come to an agreement among ourselves, among the planning board.
Well, and maybe seeing the full report will help in that regards too, it's just if the time came up.
It keeps some comparisons that we can use to, to look at.
Yeah, and I think tomorrow or Monday or whenever, we'll have that, so there's no sense.
Yeah. Doesn't look like we're that far off.
Yep.
No, you know, it, by by saying that garages count doesn't, doesn't answer that question about where to guest pack, you know, we we say they can pack off-site, and and I think we agree with that, that they can pack off-site and see one, and I think,
Yeah.
I think we're okay with that, it's just how many places, we gotta tell people how many places. Uh, how many extra places they need.
Well. Why? Why do we, I mean, with what Mark's suggesting anyway, with the shared parking, we we have an overabundance of parking existing that's not used at all times of the day. Wha- so are you saying we have to have like X number of spaces for this, place of X for this, and make sure it divvies up correctly, or what do you say?
Well, our regulations say that they have to have a right to park on the off-site.
Mm-hmm.
So we're saying, yeah, they can park off-site, and that off-site is shared.
Mm-hmm.
But how many places are we gonna say that they ha- that they can share?
Well, you can't, you can't design for every occasion, and typically what happens, and it seems to work quite well in this town, because it's small and
Right, right.
and there's not much traffic, is you, if you're gonna have a get-together or something, that you don't have capacity for the guests as far as parking, most of the units are someplace near a public road, and you call the safety department and say, can we let our guests park out on the road for today? And they say yes, and as long as they're aware of it, it doesn't seem to be much of an issue, we've done it several times.
And that's. Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's why it seems to make sense to, to make that recommendation, but that's, we, we're not under a time constraint to make the recommendation for parking.
Because even if you, even if you mandated three extra parking places, when the guests are ten, you still have the same problem.
Yeah. Exactly.
Yeah, right, no, I know, it's, yeah, it's an arbitrary number, but at least it's a number.
Yeah, but can't.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we're, I mean, at least in this specific development that we're worried about, they're already fifty to a hundred percent over the minimum required in the zoning.
Right.
Spaces.
Yeah, no, but again, I'm gonna go with what Harry keeps saying. They're only for that owner.
Right, but, I mean, anyone going to a resort.
No, no, they're not only for that owner, they're shared.
And the guest.
What?
It's limited common, right?
It's limited common.
It's limited to that unit, yeah.
Oh, it's limited common, right, right, within that development, so.
Right, right. Within that.
Yeah.
Within that development.
But anytime you go visit anyone in a resort, I mean, oh my gosh, we tried to bring friends into Keystone and, you know, they would have to take a remote shuttle. It it's kind of a given that you have to figure things out parking wise, and in Provincetown, forget it.
Yeah.
I know.
I I mean, so it's, I don't think, I don't think it's gonna reason.
Yeah, but Provincetown is built, you know, we're talking about new development, and we have an opportunity to.
No, 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 I'm just saying that the mindset that people have that are coming to visit a resort area, they know that they have to.
Oh, yeah.
It's gotta be.
So if, if, if they scale down the new development on Green Peaks, we don't know what they're coming in with or or what their i- ideas are, uh, and a middle unit or or they they build a two-bedroom or a bunch of two-bedrooms and there's only two parking spots.
That's still within our regulations.
Are you counting the garage?
Yeah, the gar- a garage under and one spot, we're saying that that's, and there's gonna be a number of those complexes, we're saying that's enough, that's where I don't think there's enough parking, if you, if you count the two-stall and the two limited common, you say there's four,
Well, that it. So it's one point five.
you've got a great argument for, yeah, that's, that's probably enough parking.
But Bob, within five hundred feet of where those buildings are gonna be built, we have fifty parking spots that are never used.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Yeah.
Yeah.
But people don't wanna walk.
Why would we, what, why would we make them build more parking spots?
But they.
Well, that's our problem. Yeah.
Leaving, exactly.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly.
And leave that empty parking lot there.
Right, we don't wanna pave the valley pretty much.
Yeah.
I get, I get that part of it, but the, I don't think the reality is they're gonna park there and walk to somebody's condo when it's ten degrees, they're gonna park on the road and do whatever, whatever.
Then allow them to do that and let them develop the fifty spots that aren't being used.
Right.
Revert that back and don't require the Black Bear to keep all of those spots.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
If they're not gonna be used, it goes back to what Bill was saying, let's identify those spots that aren't being used,
Uh-huh.
and let's take them off the rolls of parking spaces.
You might also be able to increase the requirement of open space or something like that, and have it be kind of a dual purpose.
Sure.
Yeah.
Dual purpose, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah. In that way, it's not having to be paved and, you know, it's there for the overflow.
That's right.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
It would be a difficult time in the wintertime if you didn't require that it be plowed, but, you know, it it's, I think that's, might be someplace in between that uh, would satisfy maybe the extreme overflow situations once in a while, and still be.
And and I think that would be, that's the athletic center's answer, we've gotta make them plow that grassed area once it freezes.
Yep.
So that it can be parking in the peak, peak times, we don't need them to park nu- or pave new parking lots, we need them to maintain some open space so that parking can occur.
Plus, there's no.
And that's what he said he was gonna do, he just hasn't done it effectively yet, and I think it's an enforcement issue.
And.
Mm-hmm.
Right, you should go back and say what you did, what you see worked, right.
Go back and.
Before.
But you could designate the area on, on the cycle.
Before Wendy leaves though.
Absolutely.
Before Wendy leaves, let's pick a date and time for next week, 'cause it's, some, we definitely need a meeting next week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh.
Wednesday.
Wednesday afternoon will work for me.
I'm okay on Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday noon time?
Time.
How long is it, is it the afternoon?
It's fine, I don't care what time.
What time exactly?
Twelve o'clock, I knew.
I do. Come with your guns drawn.
Exactly.
One o'clock?
Twelve?
Twelve? One?
One o'clock?
Or twelve, whatever you wanna do.
What are you gonna do?
Hey, Mark.
You could eat lunch while you're at a meeting, it's okay.
I'll bring you lunch Wednesday, what do you wanna do?
Okay, all right, Cindy's cooking, we're, we're here at noon.
Cindy, you better cook a lot, there's a lot more people here now.
As long as I have some idea of a head count. I don't care.
So twelve?
I'd say, it'd be better in case you run a little.
Cook, cook for twenty.
Okay, I will.
All right.
Okay, so.
Twelve noon, we're eating here.
Prepare to have lunch here, it's gonna be chicken, pulled chicken, guys, with coleslaw and salad and dessert.
There we go.
Worth.
There you go.
Do we have to?
Somebody bring the wine.
Do we have to be on camera while we eat?
Pork cheese.
Sandwiches?
Pulled pork sandwiches.
Yeah.
We should make a couple more cheese.
Yeah.
With coleslaw.
It's, it's started a lot of.
With coleslaw, well, I asked for advice what people wanted with it. All right, we'll bring stuff for twenty.
We could do Wednesday.
So we're gonna be able to discuss the parking situation?
I'm a doctor, you're on your own Thursday.
Well, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna have, you really put out a notice in a public hearing on the sign thing, right? On signs, I'm gonna rewrite the regulations, you're gonna have a public hearing. No, what you're gonna do is you, the board's gonna say, yes, that is the language we wanna move forward to the public hearing, and then we'll post it. Got you, okay.
Yeah.
Hey, Mark, can we, uh, just a thought, I'm asking, can we have the athletic club do
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
little strip lines in their parking lot for parking and.
No, our regulations do not allow us to require.
Okay. Because they have no, there's no semblance of parking over there.
That's true, anything.
I am.
But there's no stripes anywhere.
But some places.
And, and.
But it, Cindy, and even if they plow a big, a big area.
Except for the town, except for the school.
Except for the school, well, because the kids need lines, so, they're doing it for the kids.
It, it's, how, you end up parking in there as an individual, and that's what gets it all messed up, right, I don't know, I don't know what the solution is, but.
I know.
I'm telling you. Public Works Department now falls under the School Department, 'cause if we can't plow the roads and the kids can't get to school safely, so that guarantees the highway budget every year.
Ah.
See, that's the way to do it, link everything to the school, pass it, so.
Ah.
Ah.
You're on camera.
It won't even.
I'm not gonna say it, yeah.
I'm just, I'm just carrying on Terry's, I'm just carrying on Terry's, uh, oh, Terry Waite, Terry Waite said that to me one day, so I'm just.
That's.
But we're passing the ladder trucks specifically to them.
No, no, the ladder trucks for the kids.
Yeah.
That's it, the ladder trucks for the school.
Ooh, that, it's true though. Safety and children will pass any year.
Safety and children.
You know, you're losing your vibe there.
Yeah.
Hey, we're never gonna get elected to higher law.
Oh, my goodness.
Too much joviality.
Oh.
So we continue, okay.
So.
Wednesday at noon.
Wednesday.
Wednesday at noon.
Just actually continue it, we don't even need to post anything.
Yeah, right.
Right.
All right.
Kidok.
So we'll guess that, what does that leave us with?
Are you providing the liquors?
What does that leave us with?
I don't bring the dukes usually.
Were you gonna approve, um, anything?
I will have dukes.
All right.
No.
Garages or anything, no?
No, not them.
Okay.
Alright.
Yeah, no worries.
We have that catch-all phrase that.
Well, okay, yeah, oh, yeah.